Perfect. Welcome everyone to the special session of the council for the town of Greater Annapolis, the sixth day of November 2024. And coincidentally, this will be our first budget meeting with respect to our 2025 budget season. So having said that, just want to remind the folks that this meeting will be live streamed to our YouTube channel. So you'll be able to watch it live via the YouTube channel or for the folks that can't watch it live, we'll be able to watch it forever and eternity at this point somewhere down the road. So welcome. And having said that, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll look for a motion to the adoption of the agenda as presented, moved by Deputy Mayor Cowherd, seconded by Councilor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Items up for discussion, the presentation of the draft 2025 utilities budget. And I know we have a number of staff members here for this. And who's going to start? Alan, are you going to start? So whenever you're ready, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, worship. Good morning, members of council. So today is our first of a few or probably many budget meetings. And today we're going to be focusing on the utilities budget, both capital and operating. Over the last couple of weeks, staff have been working internally to put this information together for council. And we're hoping that we presented a budget to you that covers the needs of the department while also being as fiscally prudent as possible. At the end of the presentation, we're going to be looking to council for support on the recommendation as you see in the agenda, while taking into consideration any adjustments that council wishes to see throughout the day. So that's our intent by the end of the meeting is to have that resolution from council.
Thanks, Ellen. And if it's if it's easier, I know we've had some successes as we go through slide by slide. As long as it doesn't disrupt your presentation, is it okay if we stop and see if there's any questions with respect to it slide by slide?
Absolutely. Yes.
Great, thanks.
After each slide, at any point in time, we welcome questions from council.
Great, thanks, Ellen.
Okay, so as you can see, we have a lot of information to cover today. And Kristy and I are going to work together on this presentation, kind of presentation, going back and forth. And as the mayor has just mentioned, at any time you guys have questions, please feel free to interrupt us. And we're happy to answer those as we go. Okay, so first, we wanted to start off the discussion with what staff's recommendation is as relates to rates. So over the past number of years, the utility rates have increased around one or two percent, just to keep up with the cost of inflation. That wasn't a kind of a true representation of what the direct costs and needs were of the department. So in 2025, we are looking to increase the rates by five percent. And that is a kind of a temporary placeholder as we wait for a full rate review. So the department has recognized that there is a need to do a full rate review, which will look at operating costs, it'll look at the future capital costs that are required by the department. It looks at, you know, lifecycle rehabilitation. It also goes into more depth into growth projections, consumption trends, economic trends, things like that, that all build into a rate study. In the absence of that rate study being available this year, there is a need to increase our rates so that we can cover the cost of the rising costs of operating that plant and specifically to the long term debt that we're going to incur for the wastewater treatment plant. So there is going to be a debenture that will be required for that project. And the current users will be required to fund a portion of that. There will also be a portion of that that will be funded by growth, which is captured through DCs. The five percent increase will increase revenues by approximately $350,000, which will help offset some of that long term debt repayment. As we mentioned, though, once the utilities masters plan is completed, we will look to do a full rate review to have a kind of a more in depth understanding of what the rate should look like, usually over about a five year term. But we didn't want to move forward without recognizing the need for increased rates to support the operations as they stand currently. Any questions on that?
Yep, go ahead, Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, worship, through you. Ellen, thank you very much for this. But I have I have some concerns with this. We're putting in a five percent, you're asking for a five percent price increase, yet we don't know what the true costs are of producing the water, treating the water, the sewage and such. Last year in 2024, sorry, this year for 2024, it was a three percent price increase. And yet we were still able to provide monies to a reserve. So I'm just wondering, why do we want to go so much higher? Yet when I read the document, I might be getting ahead of ourselves here, but we're putting a larger amount in the reserves. Keep in note that I do understand that we have the plant coming on, but there's going to be a debenture for that. And we don't know what that's going to look like, or what kind of a charge that's going to be. So I'm kind of wondering why, why so much without knowing, so why so much and for myself, knowing so little of the costs and such? Does that make sense?
Yeah, so to to answer that, or to try to answer that, the debenture that we're looking at on what we're estimating will be approximately 1.3 million per year in repayments. That's on the high end. We're hopeful that will come down. But looking at that requirement, $350,000 doesn't cover even the full requirement for that repayment. So that's why we went with that to try to cover at least a portion of that. You are correct in that we will be putting more into reserves this year than we have in the past. But that's happening at the expense of of putting other in ground capital work on pause. So typically, we do about $2 million in in ground work each year. And just with the uncertainty of where, without having the tender results in for the wastewater treatment plant, we did not include that as a actionable capital item this year, the in ground works. But the part that was going back into reserves would offset what we would typically do in in groundwork. So we're really still behind the eight ball when it comes to raising the amount of funds that would be required to support the in ground work that was required year over year.
Okay, I'll digest that for a while. Thank you.
Yep, go ahead, Ellen.
I just see that the CIO looks.
Mr. Grant, sorry about that.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, to add to that, Councilor Pennell, and I think Ellen captured it. But understanding that we're going to have future costs in excess of $500,000, whether it be 700 or 1.3 million, the strategy is to try to phase and increases we know are coming. So we don't hit people all in one year. And, you know, hopefully, when we open the envelope, we'll be pleasantly surprised. But taking a look at other capital projects and everything else, we can, we can expect, you know, reasonable cost increases and phasing it in, we felt was probably a more reasonable strategy than than not doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Sorry, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Pennell covered part of my question, but I so, Ellen, you mentioned 2 million was going to be spent in in ground this year in capital?
Our projections indicate that we should be spending approximately $2 million in in ground work each year. But we are not doing that this year. We are putting about 1.4 in back into reserves. But it's not enough to cover the in ground work that would typically happen.
Okay, that five percent increase. How much of that is an increase in operating? Is that all reserve money that you're trying to get 5% of? Or is there an increase in operating capital as well?
So the 5% increase is on the user fees, so on the rates. So that would increase the revenue.
Yes. But is that 5% totally in anticipation of the work to be done at the wastewater plant? Or is it part of capital expense this coming year?
Yeah, so it covers it covers both. I think it's important to highlight that we do have rising costs due to the long term debt. But we also have, over the last two years, been spending more on on capital and pulling from reserves to fund that. So we haven't been having a budget that's paying for itself, if you will. We've been pulling from reserve for the last couple of years to be able to keep up with that rate of capital work, which isn't a sustainable model.
Yep, go ahead, Councilor Martin.
Thank you. Every year, like Councilor Pennell mentioned, last year, we had a 3% increase. I followed it even prior to being on council. We seem to have an increase of roughly 3%, 4%. I know some of the percentages down there weren't that high. But every year, we seem to have a surplus. And is that, we have it? Kristy shaking her head now?
The last few budgets have been, we've been pulling from reserves to fund the budget. We've been increasing slowly the user rates. I think two years ago, we kept it at 2% and then increased it to 3% last year. But we are still pulling from reserves and not contributing to our reserves in those budgets. So it's not sustainable for us to continue to move forward to deplete those reserves and not be putting anything back towards them.
Thank you, Kristy. I was under the impression there was a surplus in operating every year. Okay. Again, with with this with the reserves, I know there was a debenture on the arena, which was paid off. And there was also a debenture on extending from Highway 41 out to County Road 1. Is that debenture also paid off, utility part of it?
For the utilities specifically, the only debenture we have, we'll get into further down. We had a debenture for the treated water storage tank. And I believe that was paid off in 2018. So we have been debt free since then. But obviously, that will change with the wastewater treatment plant.
So that debenture then was paid off on on that stretch of road going over to County Road. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Martin. And as we wade through this, I'm sure this is going to make a whole lot more sense as we get going. So is there any other questions with respect to the summary of utilities budget? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
So you're saying that the venture for the wastewater treatment plant, that's going to go through DC charges, so that won't be on everybody's taxes?
A portion of it. So the growth related portion of that project will be DCs can fund the repayment of the growth portion. But for the existing users, that will have to lie on on the rates.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, I'd just like to add, this year, we did break out in the budget when we were analyzing some of the numbers. Capital and operating had been combined. So we've pulled those apart separately so we can see them independently. And operating alone is operating at a surplus. So I think this year, we're budgeting, I think around a $400,000 surplus, just in operating, but that's not taking into consideration any of the capital works. And the user fees do still fund the capital works.
And I think Mr. Nobes may want to weigh in before we move on.
Yep. Excuse me. Thank you, worship. I did just want to add for clarity for council. We are undergoing development charge background study update. Since we received the substantial funding from the province, we're adding that into the calculation to determine the justified DC rates. And once that's completed, then we'll have a better indication of what percentage breakdown will be growth related versus non growth related and must be borne from user fees. We anticipate having that breakdown, our percentage split, before tender results come in.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Is there anything else before we move on? Seeing none. Go ahead, Kristy or Ellen.
Thank you, worship. So this just summarizes the staff recommendation of the 5% increase. You'll see here that 1% provides approximately $70,000 in additional revenue. And on a bi monthly bill for the average customer using about 25 cubic meters of water, it's a difference of $10.76 per bill. So per bi monthly bill. And you can see that here, just on the graph showing that it's the additional $10.76 if we were to increase the rates by 5% as recommended. And collectively, for the municipality, that provides an additional $352,000 in revenue. So when we look at some of our neighbors and our comparators, you can see presented in the graph here, the proposed rate increases in the light blue, directly beside that is where we are currently. We kind of fall in the middle of that pack. So I think that we are still very competitive, even with the proposed rate increase, where there's about four above and four below where we currently are, or where we will be, sorry. And if we were to increase the rates to get to the point of the average of these comparators, we'd be looking to increase the rates by 8%. So we are still below the average of our comparators listed here.
Just, I think we have a question from Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. More of a statement than a question. But this always makes me wonder why we're comparing ourselves with our neighbors, when really, we should only be concerned about our own residents. And when we use words of being, I don't know, when we compare it, and we're, what's the word I'm looking for here? I'm all flustered right now. But when we look at it, and we compare, like in my profession, I would never compare something so far away as to go to Port Hope and such. And I understand that we're looking at at towns that are the same size and such. But I don't think that somebody would want to choose to live here or in Port Hope over water rates. I think that we should be more concerned about what our true costs are and what we're going to be doing next year. I think we should be worried about what our true costs are and how we do cost recovery on that than just to say, oh, our neighbor to the to the east or to the west is this, so we'll we'll match them, or we'll just come a little bit below that. So I'm really looking forward to to next year, to see us do a deep dive into this, to find out what our true costs are and see where we really need to be compared to where we need to be with our with our comparison cities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Pennell. I was going to respond, but I think Mr. Grant is probably going to respond.
Thank you, worship. Through your worship to Councilor Pennell, in terms of comparing with other municipalities, a couple of things there. When I, we're going to try to do that across the board. And it's not so much to reflect whether or not we're attracted to new people coming to the community. It's more to reflect, you know, what is a reasonable expectation for the cost of doing business and infrastructure with other municipalities that might share the same costs and service obligations that we have. So if anything, I think it sort of shows how is our system operating compared to others in terms of of a cost that we're spending to provide the service. And if we're somewhere in the middle, I would suggest that we're probably doing okay in the sense that we're comparing with others that would have, in some cases, similar distances, similar operating costs. And if it were significantly higher, significantly lower, I'd have a lot of questions. But that's the rationale for that. You'll see the same when we come forward with the operating and capital budget. It's to try to put it in context about how are we doing with others that are doing similar business.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Go ahead, Kristy.
If I may just add, I think it definitely is beneficial to compare the rates for neighboring municipalities. But it is important to note that treatment technologies can vary significantly through their water and wastewater facilities. So operational costs and that sort of thing really varies depending on on what kind of systems they have. For example, someone could have a just a lagoon system for a wastewater treatment, where we're looking to have, you know, an activated granular sledge system, which has different different operational costs. So it is beneficial to compare, but they're not all apples to apples, per se.
Thanks, Kristy. Go ahead, Councilor Shane.
Kelly, when the new sewage plant's going in, we're getting the state of the art, most efficient bang for the buck, correct? We're not, we're not driving the, how do I say this? I just want to make sure the new technology that we're putting on is the most economical thing that we can do to go into the future, that not that we're still riding the old Volkswagen. I want to, I don't want to have the Porsche, but I want to have the something that's going to last the longest and has the best value to the dollar, as long as we're doing that. Because everything that I've read here so far, like 1% automatically is taken up by your with your increases with the wages and compensation. Because 1% is 70,000, what they are operational is for for staff and wages, compensation is 80,000. And the other 4,000 or 4% that you're putting in is basically for your reserves and everything else for the bills that we're going to eventually have, correct?
To answer your question about the wastewater treatment plant, we will speak to this more in early 2025. It is a special budget meeting for the wastewater treatment facility. But yes, the activated granular sledge technology that we are moving forward with or hoping to move forward with with your blessing is a new technology newer to to Canada, to North America. It has many benefits, including reduced footprint, reduced operational costs, chemical costs, and that sort of thing. So yes, in short, yes.
I like the operational cost. That's what I want to make sure that that's the most efficient way to, you know, handle handle the sewage. And with the growth that the municipalities have in the future growth, you have to, this is a long term investment. So when you when you go back through the figures over the years of what the increases are, you know, I mean, you're down to 1.9% during some years, other years, you're at four at the beginning, 2013. So you're still, that's more of a statement. May I ask, this might be a real simple question, but I'm not a May I ask, this might be a real simple question, but I'm not a water sewer. I have to supply my own water sewer. Bi-monthly, that means every two months you get a check. So it's five dollars and something extra. They're going to pay on an average bill per month, correct?
Per, it amounts to five dollars and change per month, but we bill six times a year. So yes, that's correct.
What we're, you know, considering what the debt load's going to be in the capital, unfinanced capital as a debt and what our debenture might be and what rate that might be. There's a lot of things that we don't know the exact figures because we haven't, you know, some of those have not come in. Yeah, all right. Just want to be on all of the same page here.
Yep, exactly. And that's five dollars and a few cents per month, but we bill bi-monthly. So it's ten dollars per bill. So I think, Mr. Nobes, did you want to weigh in there?
Yep, thank you, worship. I just wanted to add to Kristy's statements regarding the new technology. So although it's newer to North America, it's well proven in the EU, which is a very progressive area. And it's been, it's been in operation for quite some time and they're seeing good results with this technology. So we're very much optimistic to see reduced overall operating, overall operating costs annually. And the fact that the technology requires a smaller footprint will ultimately result in a reduced construction cost. If you were to compare an older technology versus the newer technology, the capital outlay needed to establish such facilities is lesser in overall cost. So ultimately, yes, it's the best value for the money, this technology.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Shank.
So Michael, Kelly, will this minimize the amount of, how do I say this correctly? The lagoon system that we're currently using? Is this going to deplete this, what we, is this going to, you know, phase that out over time or?
So with the new technology, there still will be biosolids produced that we will need to dispose of. We're looking at the long-term options, I guess, through a biosolids master plan to determine exact volumes and what sort of storage or handling we will need for that.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Sorry to take your time, but I just want to get this, I don't do this every day. So the biosolids could possibly be removed right away rather than using the end? Like, I know with a lot of biosolids are going on a lot of agricultural land. Will that, can that be done right from there and, you know, spread on the fields right away rather than, you know, using a kind of a holding area?
So the difficulty with the wastewater treatment technology is that we're removing biosolids from the system every day. So as you're aware, there's limitations to when you can field apply. So options include storage in a lagoon similar to what we're doing now. And then certain times of the year, spreading those on fields. The other options include basically a drying facility on the site that would essentially make it into a cake to dispose in other methods. But those are certainly being explored.
Great, thanks, Counselor Shank. Thanks, Kristy. Mr. Nobes, yep, go ahead, Mike.
Just one last comment on that. So we were in the throes of working through that biosolids master plan review. So that will be coming back to counsel likely in mid twenty twenty-five, we estimate. But certainly, there's likely going to be some cost associated with that. So we're looking to separate that from the overall build costs so we can focus on one and then the other thereafter. But, you know, we're looking at full cycle costing associated with biosolids and looking at every option and avenue available to the municipality for the best operational costs, I'll say, and what makes the most sense for the facility and the community as a whole. So to come, we're not quite there yet with the final, final review and report for counsel. But it just making counsel aware that this is something that we will be coming back with in the future.
Great, thanks, thanks, Michael. If, oh, Deputy McHower, go ahead.
Probably not the, not the time for the conversation, but this new facility that we're going to be doing, is there any in North America that's up and running now?
Yes, through you, there are. We will speak to this in more detail in our early twenty twenty-five presentation and give a full background on the project and that sort of thing. But yes, there are some in the States and Western Canada. I'm not sure if they're in operation fully, but working on that.
Awesome, no, that's wonderful. I wouldn't buy a brand new car coming off the, off the line unless somebody's proven it. So that's wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy McHower. If there's, oh, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, worship, through you. I just want to justify my comments regarding the comparisons, the comparables. When I read a statement like this, says in order to bring Greater Napanee's rates equal to the average of those comparators, the rates would need to increase by eight percent. It makes me wonder why that statement was on there. And then is it to justify the five percent increase? So we're saying that see, the average of our comparables are higher than what the rate increases that we're giving. And that's the reason why I went down and started talking about this. I listened to everybody's explanation of why we compare to that. But when I read a statement like that, it kind of really makes me think it's dollars and cents. And that's what I'm concerned about.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Penel. And just, although just laying in brief, I know we don't set our rates by the comparators and I understand that. But after today, we're going to get some inquiries and we're going to get some comments from the public to say, why does Loyalists or why does Stone Mills or why does the city of Kingston be able to give us these services cheaper than we're doing? And we're going to put this five percent. I think for me, I understand that we don't actually set our rates by the comparators, but it helps me to give me a well-rounded view as to where we are with respect to our neighbors. And I think Kristy was very graciously explained to us that we, obviously, we can't compare to our neighbors because we all have different systems. We all have different needs, we all have different processes. But it just gives us a ballpark idea as to where we're at. So I'm not overly concerned about the comparison and I kind of like it because it does sort of put things into perspective as to where we sit with respect to these things. So I like seeing it just because I know I'm going to get the questions from the general public. So thank you. Is there anything else? Yep, Counselor Shank.
I like comparisons. I always love data. You can never have enough data to make an informed decision. There's a couple of municipalities there I know are extremely high, all right? And from the history that I've seen is when a municipality lets things go, let's go, let's go, let's go. Because it's a lot, it's really easy to go ahead and come in cheap every year. Sooner or later, you're going to have to pay the dollar. So you can do it gradually and stay automated. Or you can run everything down till it can't run anymore. And then you have to pay an absorbent cost. And that's where it's happening with a couple of them. But when you consider what the assessment base in the city of Kingston, amount of volumes, amount of miles that they're running and what they're at and how many miles we're running and what we're doing and the population that we have, you know what I mean? So it's like the tax rate out of the city of Toronto, one percent assessment raises how much money? And one percent assessment rate here raises how much money? This one is basically for Matthew is that when we do the OPP, when we do the other one, I like to see the data on that one, all right? What Town of Greater Napanee pays and what the other municipalities pay. It's like Collingwood that got hit with a thirty-seven percent. I know that's not PUC, but it gives us a data of what we can do and how we might be able to argue that point, which is a long ways down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shank. Go ahead, Ellen.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to provide context for counsel that the recommendation for our five percent increase came far before this slide presentation was developed. And that did not come into play in our recommendation initially. I just believe that it provides some context on where we sit relative to our neighbors, just for context. But it was not a deciding factor in our recommendation to increase the rates by five percent.
Great, thank you, thank you, Ellen. Is there, is there anything else? If not, we'll move on to the next slide.
Okay, thank you, worship. This graph here looks at our historical budgets. And the intent of this slide is to show to you what portion of our budget we are supplementing through reserves or through grant funds. So as you can see, in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, that light blue bar was quite significant. And we were relying heavily on reserves and grant funds to supplement primarily our capital budgets. And in twenty twenty-four, we are doing that. We will be pulling some monies back out of reserves. So we have our capital surcharge that's charged each year. So that goes into reserves. And then in this year, we'll be pulling only a small portion of that to fund this year's capital. Where in years prior, we have pulled that full amount of the capital surcharge and in some cases, and then some where we were dipping further into reserves. So we just wanted to highlight here kind of how the trends have gone over the years. And we're looking to close that gap on that light blue bar here.
Is there any questions? If not, we'll move on to the next slide. Yep, go ahead, Counselor Shank.
So in the future, Ellen, what I always love to see is how much are we actually? Because a budget isn't a real true budget when you're going ahead and using your reserves to do the budget. But what would it be cost? What is, what does it actually cost us to run the whole thing rather than always depleting the reserves and depleting the reserves? And, you know, it's not really a true budget when you're using money that's in the bank that was put away for something else. It's just that, you know, as we go on, then you can see exactly what it is. It probably shows here somewhere else, but I haven't, you know, maybe I haven't picked it out, but there we go.
I believe we'll get to that near the end, yes.
Sorry, go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, worship, through you, Ellen. If we look at this graph on page eight, two thousand twenty-four for this year, the blue, the blue line has a three million five hundred and eighty-one thousand over top of it. Is that what you're suggesting that we're pulling from reserves this year? And then in the two thousand twenty-five budget that we're talking about today, the proposal would be to pull one point two million from reserves?
Through your worship to Counselor Penel, that is correct. Although in twenty twenty-four, that is based on budgeted figures, not on our year-end projected values. So that number is actually quite a bit lower when we look at our actuals or our projected actuals, which is largely related to the wastewater treatment plant upgrades and the grant funding portion of that project.
Okay, thanks. So if we look at two thousand twenty-five, again, budgeted numbers of one point two that you're pulling from reserves, I'd like to bring this, just if we can make a mental note, I'd like to bring this back up when we, when we look at page twenty-eight of that. I want to see where that is reflected in there because, well, we'll worry about that when we get there. But I just want to make a note of that. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penel. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next slide.
Thank you, worship. I'm going to turn things largely over to Kristy from this point forward as we kind of get into the details of what's included in the budget specifically.
Thank you. So I'll just give a quick overview as we go through these next few slides. So our projected year-end expenditures for twenty twenty-four are expected to be under budget by one point six million. This is specifically related to the timing of the tender release for the wastewater treatment plant project. When we created the twenty twenty-four budget, we had hoped to be a little bit ahead of where we are with that project. So that's the reason for that variance. And as a result of that, there's an expense, savings on the expense side for our revenue, our projected, sorry, as a result of the savings on the expense side, our revenue is projected to be approximately four hundred and seventy-seven thousand under the twenty twenty-four budgeted value. And that's a result of the claims for the wastewater treatment plant project and the federal funding we were expected to receive. As mentioned, our rate comparisons indicate that we are competitive with others. Our unaudited utilities reserve balances are total over eight point six million, and we'll get into that in a later slide. Our wastewater treatment plant project upgrades continue. We completed the maintenance garage in twenty twenty-four and we're looking to proceed with the process upgrades in early, to begin in early twenty twenty-five. And again, I believe we've mentioned this already, but just to reiterate, we will come back to you in early twenty twenty-five with a separate budget for the project specifically and a funding strategy for that. And this year, the twenty twenty-five projected budget or proposed budget includes one point three millions, one point three million in contribution for the wastewater treatment plant debenture, which is, we'll get into again in early twenty twenty-five.
Great, thanks, Kristy. Is there any questions with respect to this slide? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mary. So eight point six million in reserves right now, is that what we've got in reserves right now?
We'll speak to that in a later slide, Counselor Martin. But yes, in total, that consumes a few different reserves.
Does that include monies that have come in from the sale of Commercial Court? That includes that? Okay. Does that include any money credited back to utilities from construction of East Street? Because didn't utilities pay for a hundred percent of East Street construction, which was only supposed to be fifty percent?
Through your worship, so East Street is sitting as unfunded and hasn't been borrowed from this reserve on the books right now. So no, it does not include any withdrawal or any repayment. So East Street is not affecting those.
So East Street is still an unfunded liability?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Martin, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, worship, through you. Ellen or Kristy, it's either, either. We've mentioned a couple of times, it's been mentioned a couple of times, that we're going to come back, that you're going to come back and present to council in two thousand twenty-five another budget. How is that budget going to look compared to this budget? Is it going to be another separate line item? Is it going to be an additional charge? Or is it going to be showing where this one point three is going to be going towards the debenture? I just want to make sure that we're not going to be hit with another fee in two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, your worship, Counselor Penel. There will be no ask of additional commitments from council outside of this budget. Included in this budget is with a one point three million going towards the debenture cost. That number may reduce depending on the tender results. I don't expect it to increase. Mind you, costs are a little bit unpredictable right now. But the budget will be more specific to the plant itself. And then the financing strategy will outline all the funding sources, including contributions from reserves, DCs, our long-term debt. But it will reference back to the one point three million that's included in this budget.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Penel, Counselor Martin.
Just one quick question. The construction of the garage, is that paid for? Or is that going to be added to the debenture for the sewer treatments plant?
The garage is completed. And it, at this point, it depends on how we apply our funding towards it. We will not be using the federal funding to support this, sorry, the provincial funding to support the garage. I do believe that we've accessed some of the provincial funding, sorry, the federal funding, the initial funding for the support of the garage. So no, it will be built into our long-term, our portion will be built into the long-term cost, but should not exceed what we're currently presenting here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next slide.
So this slide's just a visual to show our bi-monthly average residential consumption and how that's changed with the rate changes over the years. So far in twenty twenty-four, mind you, we had only four billing cycles completed at the time of this presentation. But the average consumption is twenty-four point eight cubic meters per billing cycle, which is just very slightly higher than the twenty-four point five in twenty twenty-three. It is worth noting that we've seen a significant drop in consumption since two thousand eight, when our by, average bi-monthly was about forty point five cubic meters.
Is there any questions with respect to this slide? Seeing none, go ahead, Kristy.
So currently, we have three thousand five hundred and eighty-six customers serviced by our Water and Sewer with eighty-eight percent of those being residential customers or users. They account for approximately 60% of our billed water revenue. And at 25 cubic meters bi-monthly, the fixed portion of our utility bill would be 52, where the variable is 48. And as water consumption increases, that fixed percentage obviously becomes much smaller.
Thanks, Christie. Is there any questions here? Just seeing none, go ahead.
Okay, we'll get into some of our operating expenditures here. As you can see, our projected year-end expenditures are expected to be approximately 156,000 under the 2024 approved budget. These savings were related to administrative expenses and operational savings at both the water treatment facilities, the wastewater plant, and a decrease in our in-ground infrastructure repairs. It's noted, or it should be noted that many of these items are such, subject to fluctuating operational demands. So we do see year-to-year variances at the end of each year. And that's primarily due to the unpredictability of the systems. Sometimes we see a year where we have significant in-ground repairs required. And, and others we have, touch wood, we get by with, with not so many emergency repairs. Our proposed 2025 operating budget increased by just over 62,000. And those are to reflect projected operational needs. And just to give you a bit of perspective, that's a 3% increase just on operating alone. This growth represents an increase to account for operational costs that we're looking to conduct in 2025. One being an ROV inspection for our raw water reservoir, our treated water storage tank, and our treated water tower. And we typically do those about every five years. And we're looking just to continue on with that schedule. This increase also includes consideration for our renewed lagoon lease and heat, hydro, internet taxes, and utilities for our maintenance garage.
Thanks, Christie. Is there any questions with respect to this slide? Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Thank you, your worship. So the ROV, do we own that or is that something we, we hire out to be done?
Through you, we, we hire that out and we have a company come in and, and conduct that inspection for us.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Is there anything else? Seeing none, go ahead, Christie.
So I'm not going to go through these line by line, but what we've done here is pulled out some of the key changes in the operating budget and, and helped to highlight them for you. As you'll see, related to line 19 in the budget summary, the 2025 budget decreased by 103,000 in administrative expenses. And that's because we are no longer leasing back 45 Commercial Court. And what, another change you'll see is we reallocated some of our insurance costs. Originally, we captured all of the insurance needs for the department in one line. And what we've done is now put some of them specific to the treatment facilities down in their individual lines, just to better capture the true costs. Another one I will highlight there is line 23. Our 2024 projected year-end budget is under by 18,000, as I mentioned early, earlier about emergency repairs. That's specific to that. We did look at that budget in more detail and were able to decrease it by additional $8,000 for 2025, but we thought it was important to leave essential funds there for these unplanned emergency sewer repairs, associated, associated parts and equipment and that sort of thing.
Thanks, Christie. Is there any questions with respect to this slide? Seeing none, moving on.
Line 40 for AL Defoe Water Treatment Facility, this year, we were 31,000 under or projected year-end under budget due to savings in heat costs. That is not sustainable. That is specifically due to a boiler issue that we're, I believe they're working on right, right today or moving forward this week. So that's a one-time savings that kind of came with a cost with some other things. But line 45, our Sanhurst Shores Water Treatment Facility, we've decreased the budget for 2025 by $12,000. In 2024, that was increased to allow for an intake inspection, some building maintenance, which included a new heating system, and some equipment replacements that, again, we're not forecasting for 2025. So we were able to decrease that. And similar to the one I spoke to earlier about emergency repairs, line 46 is, are projected under budget for 2024 by 18,000 due to a decrease in emergency repairs for and within our distribution system. Again, we looked at that line. We're comfortable decreasing it by an additional 5,000 for 2025. But we need to leave some essential funds there for those unexpected repairs.
Great. Go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, worship through you. Christie, sorry, I was just trying to run some numbers here and I just want to step back a little bit. Can we go to line 30, please? The wastewater on the lagoons, maybe you mentioned it, maybe I was not really hearing. But why, why the substantial increase from a budget number of 95 to a budget number for this year of 163?
So presented earlier this year, earlier this fall, was a lagoon lease agreement. So historically, that had been captured elsewhere in the budget with some different terms. And this is as a result of the new terms of the new agreement.
Right, but the new, the, the lease agreement was how much per month?
It's, it's $5,000 plus applicable taxes.
So there's still a lot of money there, right? So, sorry, what else goes along with that lease for the lagoons? Because 5,000 times 12 is not 163,000.
Oh, sorry, specifically to that section, I, I see what you're saying. You're not specifically speaking to my keynotes. You're speaking to the line in the budget. I apologize. That also includes our land application of the sludge that's from the lagoons.
Thank you.
For reference, in 2025, that will, that's a budgeted amount of $100,000.
Great, thanks, Counselor Penel. Is there anything else? If not, we'll move on to the next slide. Oh, sorry, Counselor Martin, then we'll go to Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing kind of stands out to me a little bit on line 20. It says the 2025 budget increase of 43,000 reflects the true costs for maintenance grabs, including heat, hydro, internet, and taxes. And then on line 40, it says the savings 2024 projected year-end 31,000 under budget due to savings in heat costs. So in one sense, you're saying heat is more, and then another line you're saying it's less. I'm just a little bit confused by those two.
Through you, your worship. Yes, sorry, I would just clarify. The one specific to the maintenance garage was within the 2024 budget. We weren't sure what those costs were going to look like because we hadn't moved in there yet. So the 2025 budget, we're comfortable with the numbers we've put in there. Specific to line 40, that's for the AL Defoe Water Treatment Plant, and we had boiler issues this, this year. So we weren't actually producing like we should have been in there.
Thank you, Christie. That answers me.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Just, just to verify in my own little brain here, I'm going through these line items. It looks like, you know, we're 47K under budget here, 18K under there. You know, we're over here, over there, but it works out to $178,000 under budget for the 2024, and we're only looking for a 43,000 difference for the biosolids. Is, is that my reading this right? Like we, we come in 178,000 under budget altogether? Like just adding up all these line items here, that's all I was doing.
I think Deputy Mayor Cowherd, you're on the line items. You're not on the slides. Am I correct?
I went back to operating expenditures keynote, the same as we're right there. Like starts out line 19, projected 68K under budget. Line 20 was a 43K over or increased. Line 21 was 47 under budget.
So yes, I guess these slides are kind of speaking to two different things. We're, we're just trying to summarize the, where we are. Any, any significant variances for 2024, but it's also including 2025 changes. Maybe moving forward, that would be beneficial for us to separate those slides and speak specifically to the year-end for one year and then get into the new year. In total, we, we mentioned on the previous slide, we are projecting our year-end expenditures for 2025, 2024 to be approximately 156,000 under the budget. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, great, thanks. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Is there anything else? If not, we'll move on. Go ahead, Christie.
Okay, so in the 2025 projected budget, we are increasing or projecting to increase by $80,000 for salaries and benefits. This increase is specifically related to the wage and benefit adjustments in the pre-approved compensation agreements. And it's important to note that's year-end salary allocations fluctuate between each individual GL line based upon, upon actual workload and system requirements. So sometimes we may see an increase in one of our areas of the distribution system, but a decrease in one of the treatment plants and, and that sort of thing. But the general value remains the same.
Thanks, Christie. Is there any questions with respect to this slide? Seeing none, go on.
So for capital expenditures for 2025, we're looking to carry forward the pre, some of our pre-engineering work to have some of our in-ground projects shovel-ready. We didn't move forward with this in 2024, and it's, this is primarily due to the uncertainty of the debenture for the wastewater treatment plant. We weren't comfortable having a bunch of projects shovel-ready if we weren't going to be able to fund in-ground projects in the future. And we're feeling better based on some of the debenture costs that we've looked at and explored with through finance and, and that sort of thing. So we're recommending moving forward with pre-engineering. So having some of these roads or areas shovel-ready for, for projects in the future. This will also allow us to be, to jump on any funding opportunities. A lot of funding applications have a requirement to have projects shovel-ready, and this will assist us in, in having some of that engineering work at our fingertips for these projects. The areas we've identified are some areas of need known to us in, in the department. So Thomas Street from Belver Road to Simcoe, Napier from Dundas Street to the Dead End, Hesford, a portion of Hesford, a portion of Water Street, and then some pre-engineering for future joint projects with the county, which includes the Dundas Street Phase Four. So east of the Gilbert, Gilbert Development there. Center Street from, I believe it's Bridge to Isabella. And yeah, we will plan to have some of these projects shelf-ready, ready for future budgets. We are also planning to replace two chlorine plumps at our Lake Ontario pumping station, which is the intake for the AL Defoe Water Treatment Plant. We're looking to purchase one as a replacement and one to have a spare on the shelf for redundancy. We use the chlorine there for pre-chlorination, primarily for zebra muscle control, but also to maintain small residual in our 16-kilometer main that comes from the lake into the raw water reservoir here in town. We're looking to replace two SCADA packs, one at each of our treated water booster stations in the distribution system. One being the Brandon Booster Station north of the 401, and one being the McCabe Street Booster Station, which is across from the golf course. And these SCADA packs essentially allow those stations to communicate with our main water treatment plant and, and allow for remote monitoring and that sort of thing to maintain pressures in our system. We've budgeted $15,000 to purchase surveillance cameras for the monitoring during the wastewater treatment plant construction. So these cameras will essentially serve a dual purpose. This will allow us to monitor the site during the construction, but they will be used or, or moved and relocated onto or into the facility once it's complete. I think it's just, just for everyone's awareness that, that specific area, we did have issues during the construction of the maintenance garage. We had an increase in security costs that was brought to council last year during, during the holiday season. I think we spent over $12,000 just in site monitoring at that site for a few weeks. So we feel that the purchase of these surveillance can, cameras will be beneficial due to the trespassing vandalism theft and health and safety risks at that site, especially during construction. As we've, Ellen and I have both spoken about, we've budgeted 1.3 million for the anticipated debt repayment of the wastewater treatment facility. And then as part of our tenure replacement program for our utilities fleet, we're recommending the replacement of a 2014 Dodge Van. It's currently a minivan style, and it's used for our meter and utility locate program. This vehicle, we're recommending moving forward with a purchase of a more fuller-sized cargo van, maybe something like a Ford Transit. Essentially, this vehicle isn't serving the purpose it should. The size of the vehicle doesn't really suit the needs of the position. We replace water meters. We're using it for meter reading and locates, and there, there's limited storage requirements or storage availability in the current unit. So we're looking for something with a bit more space. This will limit returning to maybe multiple times returning back to a site visit to go to the shop to get more equipment and that sort of thing. So we've budgeted for that for 2025. And we're also looking to continue with our water meter replacement program. So for the past several years, we've been purchasing 200 water meters per year. And we're very close to the end of that program. So we've been replacing touchpad units with radio frequency units, which will allow for increased data transfer, improved accuracy of the meter, allowing for better time management for our meter reading program. So we're looking to proceed with that in 2024. One thing, or 2025, sorry. One thing to note there, we were slightly under budget for 2024, so we're recommending carrying forward that $7,400 into 2025 to help offset some of those costs. And lastly, for our capital budget this year, we're recommending a laptop replacement for 13 of our staff. And that does include our operations staff and office staff that work at 99 Advanced. It's my understanding that the laptops are between four and seven years old, and the industry standard for replacement of those is about three years. So we're seeing performance degradation and system failure, failures on these machines. It's my understanding as well that there's a major concern of security risks due to the aging and unsupported systems not being able to be essentially patched any further moving forward. So that's what we've put together for capital. I will get into kind of more detail on the next slide about some of our in-ground capital needs that we've held off this year, but I'm certainly available for questions on this slide before we move forward.
Great, thanks, Christie. Do we have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, worship through you. Christie, did we get a quote on this van?
Through you, yes, we have a quote on, I believe it was the Ford Transit. That's a bulk part cost, but what we do move forward with is we put it out to tender, I believe, with specifications of what we're looking for. And and we we're not, we're not stuck on a certain model, a certain make, I guess, or a certain brand, but we will specify kind of a size and what we're looking for in more detail.
The issue that I have with this and why I ask the question is eighty thousand dollars for the van budgeted. And if it comes in under, the ratepayers have already paid that overpriced, if you will, and it goes into reserves. So I'd really like to keep that number as tight as possible instead of instead of having the ratepayers just, oh, we'll just do eighty thousand dollars, right? That's that's what I see when I see a round number like this.
Thanks, Constable. Counselor Schenk.
I just want to, I know it's public utilities, but we're all basically all greater nappany. So under capital fleet replacement, does the municipality have a transit vehicle that we're currently using that are not? Everybody shaking their head no, so you've already looked at that, all right? And why do we have to? I'm just, I know I'm nickel and diamond, but I mean, the way the economy is and the way it everything is and way the tax rates are is any way that we could actually look at maybe a used one? You know what I mean? What would the savings be? You know what I mean? And is our IT department also going with the laptop? Do we have any new laptops that are not being currently used? You know what I mean? Just for security, so we don't run into that problem that we currently had, well, that we had previously. So I just want to make sure that we're not having a silo here and a silo here where you're going, oh, I'm buying an eighty thousand dollar thing. But we have one over here that we're all talking together, that we're looking at both sides and seeing what is the best bang for the buck. Because if you've used one for ten years and how many kilometers on that, why do you need to replace it? Okay, you're saying because of the size and usage, all right? And we need to grade up, but are we still keeping that vehicle? Are we selling that vehicle? So therefore, you've got eighty thousand dollars here, but can we get twenty thousand dollars for that vehicle? So you really only need six. I just want to make sure that one side's talking to the other side, because as we go into general, we're going to be going through a lot of capital also.
I think Mr. Grant can reply to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Schenk. So the short answer to are we taking a look across the corporation? I would say that is something that we're starting to do a lot better. And one of the the impetuses for the reorganization that I brought forward to council earlier was to specifically remove the siloing of fleet and facilities so we can actually have a more comprehensive look at that. There is, there will be some considerations in the operating and capital budget where we're going to be recommending a position for bylaw. And one of the things we're looking to do is to reuse a truck, if you will, that we had considered surplus and selling, but can we get more mileage out of it? In terms of the laptops, my understanding in speaking with information technology is this is but a number of of laptops that are nearing the end of their usable life. I think that reusing laptops is probably not an option. Going to desktops would probably be a cheaper solution for some things, but may not be fit for purpose for operational costs. But certainly something we could look at, but in terms of being able to to reuse laptops, I would suggest this year that's probably not an option, Counselor.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
You were saying thirteen laptops. I should know this, but how many, how many are they? How many employees do you have currently in public utilities? And why is there, like, does everybody get a free laptop, you know what I mean, when they work? And are they limited what they can do on that laptop, you know, just for work purposes? Or I know I'm nickel and diming, but I just, you know, it's still thirteen laptops. Do all thirteen people need a laptop?
Through you, yes, we have a, correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, nine utilities operators and four or five of us in the office as well, compliance, utilities admin, myself and Andrew, and an engineering technologist. And yes, again, not specifically laptop maybe, but they do use computers very frequently throughout the day. Our operators, for example, are required to log a ton of data that they collect throughout the day. There's different involvements for, I guess, depending on their positions, and we don't need to get into a great detail, but but essentially, yes, they're they're on computers a significant portion of every day, including our office staff who are essentially glued to the computers.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk. Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Yeah, just just to clarify for the people watching at home here. So you're asking twenty six thousand dollars for thirteen laptops is about two grand a laptop. So can you elaborate so people aren't realizing they're not really just like a Walmart laptop we're getting? We're getting fairly high-end laptops.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. So just generally speaking, you will see this request on the town side as well. So IT will be putting forward a budget request for replacement of our of all of our laptops, given the lifecycle that really a short lifecycle that our technology does have. And yes, there is a lot of increased security, and I will let the IT manager speak to that more in detail on the town side. This is coming forward at utilities as a funding strategy. So originally, it was all included on the town side, and we looked at this and said, no, you know what? A portion of this is related to utilities, so we've pulled out the portion specific to the utility employees and funding it through their portion of the budget. But this will be a larger conversation, certainly that will come at capital on the town side as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Cowherd. Is there anything else? If not, I just got a quick question about the surveillance cameras. Are the surveillance cameras, they they tie into this new system that we have in the downtown area? Or can we piggyback onto that, or is it part of that? And I'm only asking just because it seems to be a pretty good system that we got down there, so I would hate to not take advantage of if we could, so.
I I'm not an expert in this, so we have worked through our IT department significantly to get this information. But it's my understanding they're the same technology as what we've just recently purchased for the rest of the town.
Okay, great. Thank you, Christie. Counselor Pinal.
I think you worship through you, Christie, when we go back to the in-ground works, we carried over a hundred ten thousand from two thousand twenty four. And then the capital request for two thousand twenty five is a hundred ten. So actually, for all that works, it's two twenty, or is it one ten?
It's just the one ten, and we'll be carrying that forward, so that's not something that we need to be additionally budgeted this year.
Right, so there would there will be no additional fees for the in-ground works to the ratepayers, because we've already paid for that in the two thousand twenty four budget.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Pinal, and and I think that's good for planning with respect to that, because I think we all know that unless we're shovel ready with some some projects, we're going to have absolutely no luck getting any type of granting. And and I think now is the is the time to to maybe get our hand out there and see if we can't get some some funding for some infrastructure. So I like that. So is there anything else? Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Just one, just one question. Back to the meter van replacement, has anybody looked at going to hybrids or full electric? Because this vehicle typically doesn't leave the town.
So I, it's my understanding that all options will be explored for the purchase. I believe we, in the tender, we will specify side, size and need. But it it won't get into, it's it's basically more like an RFP, allowing the various suppliers to bid on what they have or what they recommend for our needs.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, Brian. Is there anything else before we move on? Seeing none, go ahead, Christie.
So it's been mentioned a few times that there is significant in-ground capital need for infrastructure. As mentioned, we've we've put it off. We're not recommending any major reconstruction for twenty twenty five, but we thought it was important to kind of note some some areas of a concern and opportunities for joint ventures with the county moving forward to to kind of keep that in in your eyes and in the publics and why we're looking to continue these contributions to reserves to fund some of these projects. So this is a list of essentially what we've put together as our needs over the next five years. It's not in any particular order, but it does show some areas of concern. So some vintage pipe or a significant break history, for example. And we have a water main on Isabella that has some break history that we need to identify address moving forward or a sanitary that's seeing collapse such as Thomas Street. And again, some joint projects that we should really consider investing in with the county, which would be the Dundas Street Phase Four, Dundas Street West towards Cherrywood Parkway, and then Center Street, which was mentioned earlier from, I believe, Bridge to Isabella. So these identified partnerships would ensure all replacement needs are considered and improve our infrastructure reliability and avoid duplication of efforts and allow for some cost savings. In the past, we have, our department specifically has missed out on some opportunities and to no fault of anyone's, but we're really working together to ensure that this doesn't happen moving forward. An example of that is Thomas Street. We have, as I just mentioned, a sanitary with a lot of collapsed history and break history there. But in the not so distant past, that was re resurfaced through the town without consideration for the in-ground infrastructure there. So we want to ensure that moving forward, we're not missing out on those opportunities, and we're we're moving forward on joint ventures together. And as mentioned, we have opportunities to join in on some pretty big county projects in the next few years. And in our opinion from the department, it would be in our best interest to move forward on some of them to replace our aging infrastructure. For example, Center Street, there's some vintage pipe under there that that really, you know, they could go ahead with the resurfacing, the county itself. But if if we don't join in on on replacing that, we may be looking at a lot of significant road cuts and repairs. And it wouldn't be in our best interest to move forward without or allow them to move forward without joining in on that. So essentially, what we, what I'm getting to here is that deferring these in-ground projects is not sustainable long term. We have internally identified a need for a minimum of two million dollars each year in capital. And while we aren't quite at the two million this year, we are recommending that that one point seven million dollar, nearly one point seven million dollar reserve contribution is set aside for future capital needs this year.
Great, thanks, Christie. All makes perfect sense. Is there any questions? Go ahead, Ange.
Thank you, through you, your worship. Christie, I'm really pleased to hear that there's a lot of foresight being used in in your planning. Do you have any idea, any indication from the county, when the Center Street and Dundas Street work will be taking place?
I don't know specifically. I know it's in in the next five years. I know that we have, and Jeff's not here today, but he's he's had some great conversations with them, and and they're somewhat flexible based on our availability to join in. So we'll certainly continue those conversations and see what what the the financial aspect of that will look like and and the timeline for for that. But I believe it's the next five years, twenty twenty seven targeted for now.
And I have one further question.
Yep, go ahead.
It's not necessarily relevant to the budget, but and it's maybe more directed at Michael. From the county perspective, the development of the arterial roads that are proposed, is there any chance that they'll be done before they start ripping up Center Street? Just just for my own, you know, interest, I guess, I'm I'm asking.
Through worship, the timing of the construction of that road, I doubt it in the next three years. Hopeful, but I doubt it, unfortunately. So we'll we'll likely be looking at some significant detours around Center Street during that time. But I did want to highlight where where Christie had mentioned the reconstruction along Dundas Street out towards Cherrywood Parkway, that that lengthy stretch. That's been highlighted through the municipal class EA as an area in need of upsizing to accommodate future growth. So that's something that we're looking, that we would be adding into the development charge background study to help recapture those costs for the town from a growth perspective.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Hicks, and just for your information that we've, we have instructed the county to try to acquire some of the land that is going to be required for some of those arterial roads that are going to relieve some pressure off of Center Street. However, I don't think it's going to happen by twenty twenty seven. That's that's the downside to it, so. But there is some movement forward anyway, so. Is I'll go to Deputy Mayor Cowherd, and then I'll go to Counselor Martin.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, so talking actually just recently with the county, they're they're basically the Center Street to Isabella Street. They're waiting, waiting on our availability to be able to do our infrastructure underneath the road, because I know that's that's one they've they've keyed. They want to put a set of lights in, I believe it's around Graham Street. But rather than, you know, doing the work until we're ready to do ours, it's it's been on the books for a while, so. Yep, you'll see it sometime in the future, but it'll all depend on what we can afford to do.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all the work's gone into this report. You did a great job. Everybody has. One question I have on here with the future capital needs. The capital improvements on county roads or county streets, whatever you want to call them. Normally, that's a one-third, 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 and I notice you have basically fifty fifty between utilities and the county and the county. So I'm just, like, usually, construction on a county road is one-third Napanee, one-third utilities, one-third county. I'm just wondering if, unless I missed a resolution at council somewhere, changing the policy.
I think Nick Nathan can weigh in on that.
Yeah, through your worship, it would all be built back on actual cost, and if the county was doing the road reconstruction, they would pay for that portion, and then we would pay the utilities portion. I know I was just speaking with Mr. Nobes too. Like, for the Center Street portion, there could be a town expense for replacing the sidewalks and whatever else would go along with that. But if we're talking strictly the road itself on Center Street, let's say, that would be county. The underground infrastructure, that would be utilities, and then the sidewalks and whatever is, you know, our owned infrastructure, like town side, we would pay directly. But it's not, it's not an arbitrary one-third, one-third, one-third anymore. It's built back on actual cost is is accurately as we can, and that's no different for really any of our infrastructure projects anymore.
Yep, go ahead, go ahead.
So Nathan, you say it's not one-third, one-third, one-third anymore, so that policy's been changed?
Through your worship, to my knowledge, at least since I've been here, I don't know that was a policy. I can't speak on the past fully. I don't know if anybody else is aware of that being the case, but I I don't know that to be a policy.
Thanks, Nathan.
Go ahead, go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, just to add to that, I I'm not aware of that either, and I think just the difference here is that those are that they're county roads, so the road itself would be the responsibility of the county financially. And the town's involvement in that is only the in-ground underground infrastructure. We wouldn't have responsibility to the road itself, aside from, like you mentioned, with sidewalks and some of the other smaller things. So it wouldn't have been a third, a third.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Martin. Is there anything else just before we move on? Seeing nothing? Go ahead, Christie.
If I just might add, and I I included the organizations involved, but they're not specifically a fifty fifty split or anything. I just wanted to give a visual that, you know, the Thomas Street, Mill Street, Water Street would be, we're looking for utilities, obviously in-ground infrastructure, and then the road base itself would be a town contribution. And then similar, the Center Street and the two Dundas Streets, as noted, were county county road and utilities in-ground infrastructure.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Just just a quick, so when we do these projects, we're not doing sidewalks and curbs? We are?
My understanding, yes. I haven't seen plans for these yet. Obviously, we're looking to get some of these pre-engineered, but they My understanding, yes, I haven't seen plans for these yet. Obviously, we're looking to get some of these pre-engineered, but they will include. As required sidewalks and curbing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Is there, go ahead, Alan.
Thank you, worship. I just want to add just kind of generalization to this slide and just highlighting. Some of the financial needs that we're going to have going forward, so. As we have tried to highlight here in the past, our capital surcharge has primarily been used within the existing. Budget year to support this $2 million of in-ground work. When we started to layer on the wastewater treatment plant and some of the financing that's required to support that. Our numbers become a lot tighter and more difficult to support. Without looking at alternative financing and looking at our rates, so. You're going to see this both on the town side and on the utility side. We have a lot of. A lot of in-ground work, a lot of expensive asset work, and our funding gap continues to grow if we don't. Continue to invest in our capital assets, so. This is this is not a unique position to the town of Greater Napanee, but it's certainly something that we're going to need to look deeply at over the coming years. 2027 is not very far away, nor are the, you know, the years to come after that, so we have a lot of forward planning that needs to happen here. And and rates that may need to continue to raise beyond what we're recommending at this point. To be able to cover some of this in-ground work that we're that we're not really planning for properly at this point in time.
Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Just to add to that, through you, Mr. Mayor, I think the other thing that. That council and members of the community can expect as you look across, you know, Ontario and the nation. Is you're going to see likely a divergence between brand-new communities. And older communities such as the town of Greater Napanee, whose infrastructure is quite dated. And so we're we're, you've probably heard the term infrastructure deficit, and so what happens is when you have. An older community that has some vintage infrastructure. You're going to see older communities such as such as Napanee, Hamilton. Having to increase their contributions to reserves for capital works, whereas some newer communities such as those in Peel Region. Would have less of a contribution because their infrastructure is newer. And so I just think as people look across Ontario and the nation, they're going to see that theme emerge over the coming years.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there anything else? Go ahead, Mike.
I know we haven't got there yet, but point is, is you got a $70 million waste plant, you got $30 million, you know, you're going to have to come up with, that's going to be have to be debentured. The $2 million a year that you'd like to go ahead and put under capital works, all right, for infrastructure, go ahead to keep to stay up with the times. I mean, the city of Toronto, the old part of Toronto with the old cast steel. Pipes that they had, they lose a million gallons a day and they have no idea where it goes. So it's this is throughout everywhere. So do you want to be ahead of the curve or you want to be behind the curve? Because if you're behind the curve on this and any other future. You know. You would you don't want to do this when it's minus 30 out in January. You know what I mean? And a whole block can't flush their toilet. So. There's the ramifications on that side, so you're caught between a rock and a hard spot here, but the point is, is. Just mitigate the pain. Over years rather than one. One blast, and we don't want to do it that way. I'd much rather have a gradual increase over the years to go ahead and pay for this to stay ahead of the curve. All right, because it's going to take quite a few years to stay out of the curve. And with the new sewage plant, you're going to be ahead of that curve. So and hopefully you can be able to entice new residents and new industry so the municipality can grow. So I understand your your thought process here.
Thanks, Council Shank. Go ahead, Council Martin.
I I just want to figure out this capital. You're saying we should be investing $2 million a year? In capital improvement, is that what you're? So aren't we taking in? Almost $2 million a year now? Charging user pay group. On their bills like because I think I've got a bill right here in front of me. It looks substantial. I mean, it should add up to. So I I'm just trying to, are you advocating an additional 2 million? Or that 2 million, which includes part of this?
So for the 2025 budget, we are proposing and we'll speak to it near the end, kind of in the general overview, which will give a little better idea, but. I think it's 1.7 million that will be transferred to reserves this year, and we're recommending that that's used. In the future consideration for in-ground infrastructure. We're not quite getting to that 2 million, but it it's something for this year. In the past few years, yes, we have collected the, it's actually been the past several years, but. Collected the capital maintenance surcharge, but that's been used within the existing budget, and then we've. Been pulling an additional depending on the year, but an additional value from reserves, so we haven't essentially been putting. It's been going in and back out, but it's not essentially staying in those reserves, so this year we're we're kind of hoping to do a bit more forward thinking and and getting to that. Putting 1.7 million of this budget into reserves.
Thank you, Kristi.
Great, thank you, Council Martin. Is there anything else before we move on? Seeing none? Go ahead, Kristi.
So I'll start this one, and I think Ellen might have a few things to add. For the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, we've included a timeline here just to show where we're at and where we're going. As you're aware, we started the construction of the maintenance building in 2023, finished it in 2024. More recently, we have just closed a pre-contractor pre-qualification. For the construction of the wastewater treatment plant. That recommendation will be coming to you next week at the regular session of council. And from that, we will look to move forward with allowing those. Chosen or pre-qualified contractors to bid on the tender, which we hope to have released. Before the end of the month, closing early in the new year. And then in the new year, early 2025, we will, once we have the results of the tender and a more tuned or fine-tuned number. Of budget value, we will present. The financing strategy and the specific wastewater treatment plant budget as we spoke to. And hopefully begin construction in early 2025. Continue with construction in 2026 with completion in 2027. We are with our provincial and and both provincial and federal funding. Contributions, we are stuck to some pretty tight timelines within 2027, but. At this point, we're still working with our engineers and are quite confident that we can meet those deadlines.
Great. Is there any questions with respect to the wastewater treatment plant? Seeing none? Go ahead, Kristi, or Alan, I guess.
So this is just showing that we had a debenture. Several years back now for the treated water storage tank. And we have been debt-free since 2018. Obviously, that will change moving forward with the wastewater treatment plant project.
Just a quick addition there, as we look to the debenture on the wastewater treatment plant. Just some reassurance for council in terms of how that plays into our our ARL, which is our annual repayment limit, which is set by the province. That dictates how much. Debt we can can take on and how much of our annual budget can be contributed back to the repayment of those debentures. Currently, our annual repayment limit is about $5 million, meaning that we can debenture about 64 million if we were on a 20-year term with a 5% interest rate. So what we're looking at, if we're looking at 1.3 million in an air, an annual repayment for the wastewater treatment plant is well within. The 5 million that is is currently set by the province.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Alan. Is there any questions with respect to that? Seeing none? Move on.
This slide was created to show. Where our projected revenue for 2025 is coming from. As you'll see, a significant portion for 2025 is coming from our capital and maintenance surcharge. This this pie essentially changes year over year. For example, last year, we saw a large portion or our largest portion. As federal funding that we received. This year, without going into. Dragging on the point, we've eliminated the the funding from this budget, and it will be specifically in the wastewater treatment plant budget that's coming next year. So you're no longer seeing a portion of revenue from our provincial or federal funding. As that will be specific to the wastewater treatment plant project. A large portion of our revenue also comes from our water and sewer charges, both residential and commercial. And I think it's worth noting, we've kind of summarized. $20,000 under various costs recovered. Those are things we receive reimbursement for or receive. Or we charge for, like our sanitary camera inspections. So if someone has a blockage in their system, we will go in and do a camera inspection for them. To see if it's on our side or theirs and where we may need to. Assist in the repair or if it's ours or or where they may need to repair. We also receive revenue from account termination and recoveries, and we charge back some hydro fees on our. Tank and tower for other users that that use use the tower for communications and that sort of thing. Is there any questions on that one before we move on?
Counselor Shank.
Various costs recovered. Is that? An advertised item that because you're you're not always on water and sewer, but somebody has a problem with their tile bed in the rural area, but. They don't know if it's coming from the house to the tile bed or from the or to the subject tank or if the. You know what I mean? Or from the subject tank to the tile bed? Does that is that ever advertised? I'm just trying to try trying to generate more revenue that. If that is, if you're making money on that.
For the sanitary camera inspections, specifically, we use it just within our system, so within the for our sanitary sewer customers at this point.
Is it possible that it could be a sellable item to? Other locations in Greater Napanee where they could generate, I'm just trying to generate more revenue, because. If that could be another source of of revenue, then, you know.
This is something we could certainly explore. There are challenges as our operations staff are. Utilized for from our rate payers, I guess, essentially for our water and sewer, but it's certainly something we could explore in the future.
And I think Mr. Grant wants to weigh in.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shank. I think council in the coming months will actually have a variety of opportunities to discuss, you know, ideas like this, but across every service. It is our intention to bring forward to council service levels. Where you'll see, here's all the individual services that are provided, here's specifically what we're doing and what the targets are, here's what it takes. And then if it's the will of council to amend that service one way or another, to explore opportunities. Or to reduce service. You will have that opportunity in the coming months and you can certainly explore things like that.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Ladies, penalty and interest. Do you calculate that every year, year end to date, like as the economy suffers and you go into, you know. A slowdown with the economy, does that interest in penalties, is that interest going up? Is there less people paying their bills or not? And. I just, where are we? I know 80,000, I'm considering a 7.43, 7.4 million dollar, all right? I'm just trying to think as as a revenue, is that? Are we something to be concerned about or is that? You know, I mean, I just I always look at who hasn't paid their bills and why haven't they paid the bills and and how can we? You know, where where's the hiccup or is that just the one-off?
So I can speak to the first part of that. Our penalty and interest, I believe, is is at 10%, and that's a set rate. Where we budget or how we budget the revenue on that is based on the year, the prior year's actuals and then a percentage increase on that. That I believe that set rate hasn't changed in a number of years. Ellen may have more to say about. Something that could be explored.
So you're roughly around 80,000 a year that you could project in your as penalties and interest, so there hasn't been like one year 150,000. Now we're down to 80 or or last year was 20.
I don't think we've seen large fluctuations like that, from my understanding and not necessarily with experience in this municipality, but. From my past experience, I think that you would see if you dove into those that that's a. A lot of reoccurring accounts where it's the same individuals year over year. I don't think you necessarily see significant spikes. Based on economic conditions now. Covid changed that a little bit when penalties and interest were waves in some municipalities, so you do see some fluctuations like that. But generally, I. I think it's more of a historical account users. That drive that.
Thanks, Counsel Shank. Is there anything else before we move on? Seeing nothing? Go ahead, ladies.
So on the revenue side, there were a few keynotes here worth addressing. We have. Had 20 new customers in our water and sewer system in 2024. 17 of those were residential customers. This is down significantly from the previous year. We did see a significant growth in the area in 2023. So so yes, it's down in 2024, but I'm understanding that it's expected to grow again in 2025. The line 62 speaks specifically to that federal funding for the wastewater treatment plant. That we're expecting to receive a portion of that before the end of 2024. Those are related to claims for engineering and for the maintenance garage. And again, as mentioned earlier, moving forward, both the provincial and federal funding. Will be included in that separate wastewater treatment plant project, so that's been eliminated for 2025 within this budget. And a few interesting facts that we always like to point out. As of the end of September, there had been 7,705 loads of water from the medium fill station. For the year so far, and our small fill station has given out an equivalent of 1.3 million water bottles so far. From January to September this year.
Yep, go ahead, Counsel Shank.
Oh, this is a shout out to Bob Norrie, if he's watching, everybody got an email on this one. So it made sense, I don't know if you received the email as well as everybody else on council, but. The year-end to date is 7,705 at the end of September, all right? These are water charges commercial, so that's $2 a load. That for a truckload of water. No?
If I may, $2 for one cubic meter of water.
So yeah, those is 100 gallon, 100 gallon square totes, like what do we charge? Large, I'm trying to. Did you get the same email that Bob sent?
I I I think Kristi did, and and I had a chat with her prior to council and. We. If you want to, you had a good answer for her, Kristi, if you want to.
Sure. So we're seeing a discrepancy here from what we charge at. Our medium fill station, which is at the back of the water treatment plant for one cubic meter of water. Currently, our rate is $2. And at our large bulk fill station for commercial users, I believe we're proposing $2 and. I can't find it, but I think it's 265. There is. Obviously, a significant variance in in the charge here. A few things worth pointing out. At the medium fill station, the water doesn't have to go through the transmission lines and. Put essentially a burden on our system to be. Provided to the customers here, whereas when those bulk users essentially turn things on to fill their tanks, it's putting more of a burden on our system. We are, as Ellen mentioned earlier, looking to do a full rate study in the. Near future, which will help establish true operating and treatment costs for these sort of things. So for 2025, we aren't recommending changing that rate from $2 for the medium fill station. Where the bulk fill station, we were adding the the standard 5%. This is certainly something counselor counsel can consider, but we would recommend. Staff at this point are recommending waiting to see what that rate review comes back with, and so we have more more full summer true costs. Another thing that needs to be considered, and and it hasn't been mentioned in this budget, but will be in future, a future budget. Is that we are exploring options for moving both the small and medium fill station that are housed at the water treatment plant. Obviously, that area is undergoing some significant growth and we'll see some. Changes in roadways and that sort of thing, and we feel that especially. sort of thing. And we feel that especially the medium fill station, that isn't the best location to have a lineup of trucks and trailers and that sort of thing. So we are exploring options elsewhere within the municipality to relocate that. Obviously, that's not a 2025 thing, but something that will be considered in 2026. At that point, there will be additional transmission, our costs for transferring the water there. So we may look to adjust the price at that time.
Thanks, Christie. Go ahead, Mike, then I'll go to Counselor Hicks.
I just hate to lose another year of possible extra revenue. So if you fill up 100 gallons and you can get potable water for $2 on 100 gallons, you know what I mean? Like, you can't even get a coffee for $2. So, no offense, guys, like, like, why don't you charge $5? You know what I mean? $5 doesn't even buy you a McDonald's hamburger. So all I'm saying is, is to go ahead and increase in your revenue, because you have some major expenditures here. Talking one point, or $2 million that you have to fix the infrastructure down, all right? So continuing and going ahead and going $2 when you can't even, I mean, it costs you more than a, $2 to buy a coffee, and you can fill 100 gallons of potable water, you know what I mean? And then you're talking about doing it, it's a whole nother year of revenue that you're going to be losing. And it's not that I'm nickel and diming and, don't get me wrong, but if you don't start increasing our, some of our service, what we're providing, it costs a lot. I know people pay their land taxes, their property taxes, but how do you know that every individual is a taxpayer from greater Napanee that's getting that water? So you have somebody from stone mills that's running out of water, or whatever, that, you know, or somewhere else, and saying, hey, I'm coming here, and I'm going to go ahead and I can fill up my thing for $2? You know what I mean? When it might cost us $4, because it's the infrastructure to bring that water here, that chlorine that you're putting at the, at the lake, that you have to, the two new pumps that have to be increased, that you need money for, and it's all these other things. So before, I'm not trying to be bad, you know what I mean? Just before we say I do to the budget, if you could do a quick review, just a ballpark, saying what is palatable, what isn't palatable? Because when you look at some of the charges for sewage, for other things, like in Princeville County, and what they charge for water, and there's a lot of other places they're not taking sewage to, is to look at our rates and saying, hey, you know what? We have a lot of revenue. We, I can't put it always on, on the person that's flushing the toilet, and it's a resident in the town that's on water and sewer, but some of the other people that are coming in and using that, all right? Hey, you know, because I just feel that those prices have to go up substantially.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk. I think Mr. Grant lost a way in, then I'll go to Counselor Hicks, and I'll go to Counselor Penelope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Schenk. I, one, I agree with you. And I would say that in addition to the rate review in utilities, it's my intention to ask for a fee and charges review across the board. That doesn't necessarily mean that council has to alter any fees, but I would suggest that it's important to know, like, are certain things achieving the cost that council, or the cost recovery that council through is warranted? If a program is being subsidized, is that the will of council? Like, that some of those services be subsidized? And is there revenue generating opportunities that would be fair, and fair would be determined by members of council? So the one thing that I've asked leadership to consider is, when we come forward to make a recommendation on fees and charges at all, it would be based on objective criteria, including, you know, what does it cost to provide this service? What is, what is the rate that it's going for in terms of, I don't know what a cubic meter of water costs in terms of a rate, but those kinds of things? And then giving you the whole suite of services to say, this is, this is the fees and charges that we're doing. This is what we're collecting. This is what we're paying. Is this what you want? Because what I'm hearing from, from at least you, Counselor Schenk, and I've heard from some others, is, is there areas where we might be under or overcharging? And is there an opportunity to calibrate that? And, and I would say, yes, if we were to do that this year. You know, I don't know that we would have that objective data. I can certainly talk with the team on how long that would take to collect. But more broadly, you can expect, if it's the will of council, for us to do a full review, so you understand across the board where we're at.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
I totally agree with this, doing a business, what it actually costs, what sort of thing. But instead of, I don't want to wait a year before, or a half a year to get a, get a report to do this whole thing, when it's blatantly, you know what I mean, at $2, and it's an unbelievable great deal. It's part of the, part of the service, but when you have the amount of expenditures that we are going to be encompassing, and the amount of groundwork that we're going to have to have done, you know what I mean? We're going to have to find other sources of revenue. And that's all I'm saying, is this is so blatantly at $2, because we've been at $2 for how many years? You want to move, you know, that piping because of the traffic and everything else. And when you phone for water, a water truck, and what that bill is, all right? And when you figure out somebody's getting for $2, you're going, well, no wonder there's a lineup, you know? So that's where I'm saying is, just, just, this is a Band-Aid right now, because it's so far out of whack here, that, you know, come back, tell us basically, you know what I mean? I would, I'm maybe a little bit aggressive, because I don't know what the expenditures are here, but something that's at least a bit palatable, as council, you know, then we can debate it and say yes, no, or whatever.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk. Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If it's the will of council, I would suggest a resolution to specifically look at these rates, come back in this budget process, look at what you, what we think would be an adjustment to that rate on this specific issue. If that's the will of council to move on this now, that is your privilege. So.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
Now, Terry, am I allowed to make that motion now? Or do you want to wait until the end? Or?
Well, I'm one of those types of people that, sorry, kill as you go kind of thing, yeah. But I see Christie was reaching for a microphone there. Let's, let's hear what Christie has to say, and then we'll, but we'll deal before we leave the conversation. How's that so?
If I may just add, the system down there, at the medium fill station, was built by a previous staff member, which had a significant cost savings. We're currently looking at that to see how and if, within the existing infrastructure, we can change that rate. So it's certainly something that can be explored, but I don't want to commit to, for certainty that we can change it without additional costs for upgrading the, the system down there. So just something else to consider.
Yeah, it, it, it all sounds so very, very simple sometimes, but when you start peeling the layers back, it's probably not quite so much. So I'm guessing that we'll leave it sit for now, then? Is that sort of the thinking?
Let's let Kelly go ahead, take a look, and let the staff look at it, what could be done? Is there a machine that you could go ahead and, you know, if you go to a car wash, you know, you put a $5 bill in, or whatever, what could be done? What can be done? But if it's going to cost us more than what it's going to raise, well, then of course not. But I'm just trying to raise the revenue somehow. So take a look at it first and go from there.
Yep. Okay, well, that, that makes sense. Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, through your worship. Christie, I'm looking at bulk water. Can you just, I know what it costs at the medium fill, because I sit in the truck at least once a week while we're getting a tank of water. But the 57.45 per month minimum charge, is that for a commercial hauler? They automatically pay $57, and there's a contract, and then they can fill their truck for 57.45 per load? Is that how that works?
No. So while they have their account active, they do pay a minimum fee of 57.45, plus the, the rate of 2.65 per cubic meter. They can certainly halt that if they're not, some haulers only run in the summer, so they can pause their account, and they're not paying that minimum charge to have their account active.
So if I understand correctly, a commercial hauler for a 4,500 gallon truck, which is 20,000 liters, pays $40 for the actual water, and pays $57 a month for an active account? Is that correct?
The, the 40 would depend on the size of their truck, but $2.65 per cubic meter per load, plus the 57.45 monthly, yes, minimum charge.
Yeah, I'll go to Counselor Penelope, and I'll come back to you, Mike, because it's your conversation. So go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to speak about the rates, about the, the water, the Counselor Schenk was saying. I don't think that the $2 is too far off. When I was just looking at a bill, and for residential, it was $2.54 per cubic meter to be delivered through the lines. So with having a cubic meter picked up at that, at the station, without using our lines is not far off. If we do a review of, of that rate, I mean, that's what we're here for today with, with the, with raising the budget. So next year, I guess, and if it's not going to be affected this year, because you're not asking for that in here, next year, we'll probably take a look at that anyway to bring that up. But I just wanted to make everybody aware that it's not way far off. It's $2 a cubic meter where a resident is getting paid $2.54, but using the lines. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penelope, and Counselor Schenk.
So the way, I'm not on water, so you're going to have to bear with me. But if I'm in town, I get a water bill, I have a sewage bill also. So I have all the other bills. I just don't get water from you. So I have to dispose of that water, you know what I mean? The sewage bill, and then you have your delivery fee, and you have another, because your fee, from what I understand, is an average of 200 and some odd dollars for every by month. So it's, so it's all based on that. So all I'm saying is, is you have a system right now that, oh, you know what? It was wet in the spring year, so for this month, I'm going to pay the $57, all right? I'm going to activate my account, because I'm in business. I'm only going to activate the account that I got to haul water, all right? But you have to pay for all the infrastructure to get that water to you, to supply that water for your business. So I have to put all the, you know, I have to, my pumps, my chlorine injection, and run all that water out there. I'm going to only activate my account for, let's say, July, August, or right now, we have no rain, all right? Again, so a lot of wells are dry in the neighborhood. And then I'm going to charge, and I'm going to get paid $2.65. So my, let's say, at the worst case scenario, if I only haul one wattle, water, and in that month that I have my interest, you know, it costs me 100 bucks, but I charge 300. So I'm making 200 bucks. So where I would do, not that I, the way I would do business is that if you're going to want to be a part of it, you're going to pay for the whole year. You know what I mean? So, because we have those fixed costs coming in. So you can't just pick and choose when it's good for you and it's not good, all right? Or you can drive to another municipality, pay a higher rate. So that's where I'm saying, we have to figure out, it's just not a one-month deal that costs bringing, or bringing water in. So you can't have the gravy and eat it too, because we have to figure out ways to pay for all these other costs. So that's, that's just my thought process here, because if I only do it one month, or if I'm going to only operate a business for two months, and pay myself 57 bucks a month, and then just go ahead and get the leader, right? Am I not correct?
Yeah, I, I'm going to get over to Deputy Mayor Cowper. I know he's, I think his arm's getting tired of putting it up, but we'll, I'll come back to you next. Can you just hold that thought, Ange? Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, so I've, I've been on both sides of the scale. I had a commercial account out there, filling up on a three-inch line, and also use a medium fill one down here. And I think when they get looking at the true cost of a cubic meter of water, we're doing okay at $2 down there. The biggest thing is, of course, once you run it all through the system, all through our lines, out there, the big fill up, it's a three-inch line, but there's a meter on there, and there's, there's staff time involved with keeping track of how many gallons customer A, B, C got, so on and so forth, and billing that out. You do pay a, you know, a flat rate fee of your account while it's open, plus what you actually use for water, whereas the, the medium fill down here, it's two bucks. You drop a coin in, there's no administration fee, there's no nothing. It's just, it's just straight power on, power off. It was less than 300 to build that system down there. So that's, that's why there's the difference in pricing. So I, increasing the, the small plant down here, I don't see where that's going to be beneficial. But when we get the true numbers, what it costs for a cubic meter, I think we're all going to be surprised.
Thanks, thanks, Brian, and go ahead, Ange.
Thank you, worship. No, I'm not going to. We'll discuss it over lunch. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, great. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
With that as well, I know you're talking about you paying for a load of water, but you got to figure what that driver's making, the insurance, the fuel, the maintenance, the safety. The water in that truck is absolutely peanuts compared to the rest of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Cowper. Is there, is there anything else? I, it's a pretty good conversation we had, and I, and I think we've all recognized the fact that we're going to have to change the way we do business down there, if for no other reason. I, I think that facility is going to have to move, just because of the road situation with respect to the Gibberds project and everything. So, you know, I'm reluctant to sort of Band-Aid it at this point. I think at this point, it's, it's to our advantage to look further down the road and say, what's the big picture? And how are we going to, how are we going to resolve this? So, but it was a good conversation, and I think we had to have that. So if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next slide.
Thank you, worship. Timely. Next slide. So we, we hear you, and we completely agree and understand that there are rates that we should be looking at in greater detail, including these fill stations. So that is something that we will be looking at, as the CAO has mentioned, corporate-wide in 2025. And the utility user fees will be no exception to that process. So we'll be looking more in detail at this. This was some great conversation, and we'll, we'll take those as takeaways, as we build that into the conversations, provided that council doesn't give us any concrete direction prior to that process. So we just wanted to highlight that. We will be looking at these rates in greater detail. In the meantime, there are rates that we are looking at immediately, and one of those is the hauled sewage rates, and Christie's going to elaborate some more on that service that we currently provide.
So hauled sewage encompasses our septic and holding tank waste. Currently, we accept that at our wastewater treatment facility. A few years ago now, we increased, I think we were in the range of $7 and change per cubic meter, and we increased that to 15. Over the last two years, we just added our base, two years ago was 2%. This year, it was, or last year, 2024, it was the 3% increase. But we've looked at that further, and I will get into it more in the next slide, but done more of a rate comparison, and done some background studies to see what it truly costs to treat that hauled sewage. It, and long story short, I guess, and I'll go into it more detail after, but we're looking to increase that from 15.76 per cubic meter to $23 per cubic meter in 2025. And we do feel that this is under the true cost to treat, treat this, this material. But we, we kind of have a goal in where we'd like to go over the next two years. And I guess I'll just jump into the next slide, and then allow for questions after that, if that's okay?
Yeah, why don't we do it that way? And I think we're getting close to taking a break. So once we get through these two slides, we'll, we'll take a break, so.
Perfect. So I will add, we did use the same municipalities in this rate comparison as we did for the base water and sewer rate comparison. As, as been mentioned several times now, we, it's important to do these comparisons, but they, they're, they're not all, the end-all be-all, essentially. Like, we have seen through this rate review, we included eight other municipalities. Our rate is significantly lower than the average currently, but they could have various treatment technologies. So, yeah, we've included the rate review, but it's not kind of the sole reason for requesting or suggesting an increase. I think it is worth noting that three of the municipalities have ceased accepting this material. Hauled sewage is very difficult to treat. It puts a burden on the system. There's additional operational costs with dealing with this stuff. But it is something that we feel as, as a municipality, we have to still offer for our greater rural area. So for 2025, we're suggesting an increase to get us to $23 per cube. But over the next two years, we would ultimately like to, we've kind of settled on $30 per cube, cubic meter, where we'd like to be by 2026. So this is kind of a stepping So this is kind of a stepping stone to get us there. This is for the treatment at the existing facility. Obviously, this will need to be considered with the changes. And once we move into a hopeful new wastewater treatment plant, there may be different costs associated with the treatment of this material then, which we will definitely review. Yeah, so I just would like to add that currently, or in the summer, we're getting upwards of 10 loads a day at our wastewater treatment plant. And this, as I've mentioned, has significant burden on the system. Very difficult to treat, causes process upsets and, and all sorts of things. A few years ago, this number was significantly lower. We feel that because of the way our rates are set, we are now seeing a significant number of people upwards of a couple hours traveling here outside of our system to use our, to dispose here because it's cheaper for them and because these other systems have ceased accepting it. So we certainly don't want to turn people away. But I think a change in rates can help people, guide people to maybe closer locations for their disposal. So as I said, 10 loads per day. In the summer, we're down to about four to five now. And in the summer, about 40, we started tracking it just this year, but about 40% of those loads were from outside of Greater Napmany. So we just thought it's worth noting.
Thanks, Christie. I really do think it's worth noting. Go ahead, Counselor Penelope.
Thank you, worship. Christie, how do we justify a 50% price increase when we don't know what the costs are? And my other question would be, if we are treating sewage now in town and we're, we have a charge on the bill for that, but we don't know what the true cost is, how, how can we come up with that number? And then, and then this number being different per cubic meter of waste? And my third question would be, why is waste sewage out of a septic tank harder to treat than in-town sewage?
So I'll answer that backwards, if that's okay. So hauled sewage has a higher BOD, biological oxygen demand, higher in suspended solids, higher in phosphorus and nitrogen, and therefore it's harder to treat. Within our wastewater collection system, we have sewage waste that is comprised of a variety of different things, but it's often diluted by your dishwasher or your washing machine and that sort of thing that we call gray water, essentially. So it's, when it comes into the system, it's easier to treat because it's not as strong, essentially. Whereas when you're cleaning out your septic, you're getting it from, you're essentially taking the worst of it and bringing it to us. So it's not, not like a fresh sewage that we see within the wastewater collection system. Like, that is relatively weak in comparison. Another thing to add is that hauled sewage most often or essentially always comes from private sewage systems. And it's not those users that are paying for our water and sewer base rates and charges. So that was taken into consideration. You did ask about how we came up with this rate. We've kind of piggybacked on another municipality who did a review to determine the true cost of treatment. And while we've, we've conducted it internally, we do feel comfortable with that $30 value at this point. So we've, they've looked at a variety of different things, and we kind of piggybacked off that and created our own essentially review, I guess you'd call it. So we have that document to reflect on, and that's where we came up with the $30.
Yep, great, Counselor Penelope.
Thank you, worship. Just as a follow-up, Christie, I, I accept your explanation of the dilution of the sewage. But I also want to point out that in a septic system, it captures, capturing everything. It's capturing the shower water, the sink water, the dishwasher water. Maybe not as, as a biggest, sorry, I was watching something in the background there. Something maybe not as in great detail. So I understand that. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say it because I do believe that the rate probably came from the comparisons, right? That's where it's coming from. Because you, you mentioned that you did reach out and look at a comparable.
Just to answer a couple of your questions here. So for holding tank waste, that would include your shower and that sort of thing. But your septic, the, the water essentially is, goes through a filter bread, and it's not as disposed of through your septic holder when you have that tank pumped out. So no, it is quite strong for the most part. Yes, we do accept material from holding tanks as well, but primarily, and Andrew may be able to correct me, based on what we've been tracking, most of what we see is actually from septics and not holding tanks. While there are some holding tanks, the majority is septics. And, and no, the, the rate review, as I mentioned, is beneficial to look at, but that's not where we came up with the, the $30 rate. That was using another municipality's review structure and how they came up with their amount, kind of piggybacking off of that and utilizing or inputting our own information for our own wastewater treatment facility and operational costs and that sort of thing to get to that $30.
I, I think Ange wants to weigh in, and then I'll go to Counselor Shank there.
Through you, worship, to Counselor Penelope, just a couple of things to add to the, the conversation. Septage loads, as Christie mentioned, are, are high in BOD and solids and sludge, based on the nature of, of what septic tanks do. There's also a direct throughput of that product or those things through our plant directly into our biosolids. So there's a direct link in the percentage of septage you receive and the percentage of biosolids you put out. So they're very expensive. The other part of increasing this rate is to deter pumpers from bringing, bringing products from other municipalities to our township. We commissioned a small study internally on our plant. And in all actuality, for our plant to function properly as it should, keeping our chemistry within our regulated boundaries, we, we should be only receiving one load a day. If we had a way or a pumping device that we could send right to our digesters, we could probably take four loads a day. Right now, we're loading that plant in the summer with 10 to 15 loads a day on some days, very busy days. And then in the winter with, with four loads. So even in our slow time, we're overloading that current process. And so part of the rate, it's, it's not comparables, but it's looking somewhat at how to deter those individuals from coming. Some other townships have put in surcharges if, if that product is coming from outside your township. The issue with doing that is the policing of, of what is put on the forms we receive. And obviously, we don't have the workforce, nor do we want to start following around haulers to see where things are coming from. So there's a few other things in our current process and reasoning behind trying to increase that rate. I hope that helps to answer your question a little bit.
Yes, thank you.
Great, Counselor Shank.
Is there any local haulers for the, do septic banks anymore in our municipality? Is there? So why not? So if you're outside and your place of business is outside and you're registered for use outside because it's their mailing address outside, hit that surcharge instead of the $23 that UK will do now. But anybody outside that's not running their business or for sewage haulage, then I would charge the $31, all right? And to the maximum that you can charge and charge the $31 because they're hauling, when I heard the comment, they're hauling two hours away. And in a tile bed, you know, all your gray water's going through the tile bed and in your septic tank itself where you have the partition in between the solid, people are only going to haul that, you're going to call there because when it gets backed up. So you know it's going to be jammed solid. So I understand your, but I understand, I don't understand that if your place of business says, you know, Pickering or wherever it might be, you know what I mean? Well, and you're bypassing everywhere else to get rid of your stuff, and then it becomes undue hardship to our, our public utilities. So charge them the maximum. And the local ones that are doing business, that are doing business locally, then give them the benefit of the doubt. So I don't know if you want to ponder that, but that's maybe for more discussion.
Thanks, Counselor Shank. I'll go over to Deputy Mayor Cowper.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, so just, just to back up to the septic, no pun intended on the backup. Pump many of these tanks out. And if it's a septic system, all of your water goes out into your leaching bed. Everything that stays in the tank is your solids, as per se. Lots of times, we've had to have people sit there and, you know, hold their toilet open so it's putting water in to break it down enough that we can actually suck it up with a three-inch sucker line on a sucker truck. That's how solid it is. So I totally get the rationale. It's cost more to treat it. As for, you know, trying to charge it out more to this guy or that guy or the other guy, you never know where, where somebody's coming from. I mean, we've got three or four left in the area. But when I want my tank pumped, I'm on the phone and like, I might want to pump this Saturday. So whoever can come this Saturday, and it might be, you know, it might be Frontenac, it might be Joe Mumbi, it might be whoever. It may not be the guy locally here. So it's very difficult to, to say we're going to charge, you know, out-of-town guys more money. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cowper. And I assure some of our local guys are pumping septic tanks out in Stone Mills and Agton Highlands and the city of Belleville or, or Frontenac County as well, right? So.
Okay, um, yeah, yeah. If there, if there's nothing else, I don't know if it's a good way to leave it or not, but we're going to take a break. It'll take about 15 minutes. Is there any other questions with respect to the hauled sewage rate and the conversation we had just before the break? Seeing none, and I think you kind of answered my question Christie, but I'll ask it anyways. Is that with the new plant that we have, and I know it's probably a little early to try and give me an opinion on it, but with the new plant that we're anticipating on building, would it give us or does it give us the ability to treat hauled sewage better than the old plant? And I wouldn't expect an answer right now, but if you have something on top of your head, great. If not, then I can ask that later on down the road.
Again, we can get into this more detail with the presentation for the actual facility. But ultimately, yes, the treatment challenges won't be the same because we're looking at different treatment technology. Our intake screens will be obviously new, more efficient, allow us to remove those solid materials better before they get into the process. So, so yes, we will still continue to accept the material and there may, there will still be challenges. There's always going to be challenges, I believe, but they won't be the same. We won't be facing those same challenges.
No, that's great. I appreciate that. Thanks. And when you're ready, we'll move on to the next slide.
Okay. Great. Welcome back everyone and we'll continue on. We'll just, I guess we can just clean up these slides.
Is there any other questions with respect to the hauled sewage rate and the conversation we had just before the break? Seeing none, and I think you kind of answered my question Christie, but I'll ask it anyways. Is that with the new plant that we have, and I know it's probably a little early to try and give me an opinion on it, but with the new plant that we're anticipating on building, would it give us or does it give us the ability to treat hauled sewage better than the old plant? And I wouldn't expect an answer right now, but if you have something on top of your head, great. If not, then I can ask that later on down the road.
Again, we can get into this more detail with the presentation for the actual facility. But ultimately, yes, the treatment challenges won't be the same because we're looking at different treatment technology. Our intake screens will be obviously new, more efficient, allow us to remove those solid materials better before they get into the process. So, so yes, we will still continue to accept the material and there may, there will still be challenges. There's always going to be challenges, I believe, but they won't be the same. We won't be facing those same challenges.
No, that's great. I appreciate that. Thanks. And when you're ready, we'll move on to the next slide.
Okay, so we've spoke to this a number of times now, but we're proposing a 5% rate increase to most line items with an additional 5% increase to the consumption charges over 1,000 cubes as part of the declining block rate structure. And I'm going to get into more detail on that in the next slide. But the proposed 5% increase to consumptive charges will change our water rate from $1.09 to $1.14 per cubic meter and our sewer rate from $1.42 to $1.49 per cubic meter in 2025. As mentioned earlier, we're recommending an increase from $15.76 per cubic meter to $23 per cubic meter for hauled sewage. And as mentioned, we anticipate an additional increase in 2026 to get that rate closer to where it actually should be. And I apologize, the hyperlinks in this presentation aren't working, but I have attached with the agenda package, we have attached the proposed 2025 rate schedule and how to calculate your water bill, which is often beneficial for our residents. And we've used within that how to calculate your water bill, we've put in the proposed 5% increase and the average consumption that we saw for 2024 within that.
Great. Does anyone have any questions or three aspect to the slide? Seeing none, continue on Christie.
Okay, so I had mentioned in the last slide about the declining block rate structure. So our current rate structure 2024 and prior allowed a lower unit, one lower unit rate for commercial and industrial users. So once the users got beyond 1,000 cubic meters per billing cycle, they got a reduced rate for that water. For a number of years, we, a 16-plus year transition, we've been working to eliminate that declining block rate structure. So this is something that the ministry environment is urging municipalities to get rid of. And we've been adjusting our rates accordingly over this 16-plus year with zero negative feedback from industry to date. So we've been closely monitoring consumption from our large user groups and taking that into consideration when setting these rate increases. But with the proposed 5% rate schedule for 2025 or the 5% rate increase, and if we were to add the additional 5% to remove that decline, to get us closer or eliminate that declining block, it actually gets us to the same rate. So if we move forward with this as proposed, as of this year, we will have the same rate for water for all users. So regardless of their consumption, residential, industrial, commercial, we'll have the same rate. And moving forward after rate reviews and that sort of thing, we can consider moving towards an inclining block as is seen with several municipalities, but not necessarily something that would be recommended here. That's subject to a rate review and that sort of thing. But so we're recommending the 5% increase to rates and then an additional 5% for that specific line item to get us to the same rate for a cubic meter of water. And then you will never see this slide again on the presentation.
Great, thanks. Any questions? Nope, moving on.
So this just shows that historically you would have seen a variation in the middle and the far left lines based on residential and commercial use. But now we're just showing that that's the same rate for both. And then no matter what they use, and then obviously the rate is slightly increased for the bulk water filling station, the large bulk water filling station.
Okay, moving on.
So in total, we have estimated that there's just over 3.3 million in our capital maintenance reserves as of the end of 2024. These balances are projected and unaudited, but include consideration for previous budget contributions. I think it's worth noting that the balance in the 2024 budget presentation was from a 2021 auditor's report. So the information was quite outdated and we feel, and Ellen can speak to this more, but I feel, I think that we feel more comfortable with these balances and where they're at, that this is showing a true, true representation of what we have in that, that specific reserve.
Sorry to just jump in on Christie there. Just a note on the 2024 balance. So that is projected based on budget as we had previously discussed in discussions with Councilor Penelope and some of his questions. So we do expect that number to potentially be higher given our year-to-date estimates. But those transfers are not done until year end, so we didn't include them at this point in the projection.
Our in-post reserve totals over 3.6 million. In 2023, we changed the way the in-post fees were collected. They're now included with development charges. So we haven't provided a breakdown specific to this presentation, but it's anticipated that there are additional funds and I believe Michael spoke to it a bit. But within those development charges that can be allocated towards utilities related development in the future. The current balance of our working reserve is over $1.6 million. And we always refer to this reserve as more of a personal savings account. We hold these funds for major operational needs in the future. And just a little backstory, the working reserve was created in the 90s as an emergency reserve. I apologize, I think we talk about this at every budget meeting, but it was created after we, the department saw a surge in frozen service lines after extremely cold winter. So at that point, management had determined the need to create this emergency fund and we capped it at a quarter of a million dollars. It has grown slightly, I guess significantly since then, but we don't actively contribute to that. So as part of our financing for the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to come up with where we feel a healthy balance in this specific reserve is and try to leave it at that moving forward.
Yep, good consideration.
We won't have any future problems underneath the bridge where that froze. I don't know if you were around, no you weren't around. That's where it froze from, I was on then and there was a major like, oh, what are we going to do? So is that, do you know if that's?
To my knowledge, that is not currently an area of concern, but we will never say never. Yes, we have done extensive reviews in many areas of our in-ground infrastructure and feel that we have identified any major risks.
Great, welcome back everyone and we'll continue on. We'll just, I guess we can just clean up these slides. Is there any other questions with respect to the hauled sewage rate in the conversation we had just before the break? Seeing none, and I think you kind of answered my question Christie, but I'll ask it anyways. Is that with the new plant that we have, and I know it's probably a little early to try and give me an opinion on it, but with the new plant that we're anticipating on building, would it give us or does it give us the ability to treat hauled sewage better than the old plant? And I wouldn't expect an answer right now, but if you have something on top of your head, great. If not, then I can ask that later on down the road.
Again, we can get into this more detail with the presentation for the actual facility, but ultimately, yes, the treatment challenges won't be the same because we're looking at different treatment technology. Our intake screens will be obviously new, more efficient, allow us to remove those solid materials better before they get into the process. So, so yes, we will still continue to accept the material and there may, there will still be challenges. There's always going to be challenges, I believe, but they won't be the same. We won't be facing those same challenges.
No, that's great. I appreciate that. Thanks. And when you're ready, we'll move on to the next slide.
Okay, so we've spoke to this a number of times now, but we're proposing a 5% rate increase to most line items with an additional 5% increase to the consumption charges over 1,000 cubes as part of the declining block rate structure. And I'm going to get into more detail on that in the next slide. But the proposed 5% increase to consumptive charges will change our water rate from $1.09 to $1.14 per cubic meter and our sewer rate from $1.42 to $1.49 per cubic meter in 2025. As mentioned earlier, we're recommending an increase from $15.76 per cubic meter to $23 per cubic meter for hauled sewage. And as mentioned, we anticipate an additional increase in 2026 to get that rate closer to where it actually should be. And I apologize, the hyperlinks in this presentation aren't working, but I have attached with the agenda package, we have attached the proposed 2025 rate schedule and how to calculate your water bill, which is often beneficial for our residents. And we've used within that how to calculate your water bill, we've put in the proposed 5% increase and the average consumption that we saw for 2024 within that.
Great. Does anyone have any questions with respect to the slide? Seeing none, continue on Christie.
Okay, so I had mentioned in the last slide about the declining block rate structure. So our current rate structure 2024 and prior allowed a lower unit, one lower unit rate for commercial and industrial users. So once the users got beyond 1,000 cubic meters per billing cycle, they got a reduced rate for that water. For a number of years, we, a 16-plus year transition, we've been working to eliminate that declining block rate structure. So this is something that the ministry environment is urging municipalities to get rid of. And we've been adjusting our rates accordingly over this 16-plus year with zero negative feedback from industry to date. So we've been closely monitoring consumption from our large user groups and taking that into consideration when setting these rate increases. But with the proposed 5% rate schedule for 2025 or the 5% rate increase, and if we were to add the additional 5% to remove that decline, to get us closer or eliminate that declining block, it actually gets us to the same rate. So if we move forward with this as proposed, as of this year, we will have the same rate for water for all users. So regardless of their consumption, residential, industrial, commercial, we'll have the same rate. And moving forward after rate reviews and that sort of thing, we can consider moving towards an inclining block as is seen with several municipalities, but not necessarily something that would be recommended here. That's subject to a rate review and that sort of thing. But so we're recommending the 5% increase to rates and then an additional 5% for that specific line item to get us to the same rate for a cubic meter of water. And then you will never see this slide again on the presentation.
Great, thanks. Any questions? Nope, moving on.
So this just shows that historically you would have seen a variation in the middle and the far left lines based on residential and commercial use, but now we're just showing that that's the same rate for both. And then no matter what they use, and then obviously the rate is slightly increased for the bulk water filling station, the large bulk water filling station.
Okay, moving on.
So in total, we have estimated that there's just over 3.3 million in our capital maintenance reserves as of the end of 2024. These balances are projected and unaudited, but include consideration for previous budget contributions. I think it's worth noting that the balance in the 2024 budget presentation was from a 2021 auditor's report. So the information was quite outdated and we feel, and Ellen can speak to this more, but I feel, I think that we feel more comfortable with these balances and where they're at, that this is showing a true, true representation of what we have in that, that specific reserve.
Sorry to just jump in on Christie there. Just a note on the 2024 balance. So that is projected based on budget as we had previously discussed in discussions with Councilor Pennell and some of his questions. So we do expect that number to potentially be higher, given our year-to-date estimates. But those transfers are not done until year end, so we didn't include them at this point in the projection.
Our in-post reserve totals over 3.6 million. In 2023, we changed the way the in-post fees were collected. They're now included with development charges. So we haven't provided a breakdown specific to this presentation, but it's anticipated that there are additional funds, and I believe Michael spoke to it a bit, but within those development charges that can be allocated towards utilities related development in the future. The current balance of our working reserve is over $1.6 million. And we always refer to this reserve as more of a personal savings account. We hold these funds for major operational needs in the future. And just a little backstory, the working reserve was created in the 90s as an emergency reserve. I apologize, I think we talk about this at every budget meeting, but it was created after we, the department saw a surge in frozen service lines after extremely cold winter. So at that point, management had determined the need to create this emergency fund and we capped it at a quarter of a million dollars. It has grown slightly, I guess significantly since then, but we don't actively contribute to that. So as part of our financing for the wastewater treatment plant, we're going to come up with where we feel a healthy balance in this specific reserve is and try to leave it at that moving forward.
Yep, good consideration.
We won't have any future problems underneath the bridge where that froze. I don't know if you were around, no you weren't around that. That's where it froze from, I was on then, and there was a major like, oh, what are we going to do? So is that, do you know if that's?
To my knowledge, that is not currently an area of concern, but we will never say never. Yes, we, we have done extensive reviews in many areas of our in-ground infrastructure and feel that we have identified any major risks, but of course, there's always, there's always some uncertainty there.
Go ahead, Councilor Hicks.
Through your worship, Christie, did I understand we're not actively contributing to the working reserve? So this, this is just growing, what, through interest? Is there an investment strategy for this? How, what, how, how did we get from 250,000 to 1.6 million?
So, no, we are not actively contributing. We, Nathan or Ellen might be able to speak to it, but we're unsure. In the past, there was an adjustment after an audit that funds were put in there. It may have been that they should have been put into the capital maintenance reserve and ended up in here, but they haven't grown since then, so it's not something that we actively contribute to. Again, we're looking to come up with a balance that we feel comfortable with. We feel that currently it's likely higher than it needs to be, and we may be able to contribute some of these funds to the wastewater treatment plant project or elsewhere. And then we will look to kind of keep this at a healthy enough level if there were ever emergencies that were needed moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to Christie's comments there, so two things. One, this is kind of a snapshot of where reserves are at currently. Of course, we're going to have significantly more conversations around this as we present the financing strategy to council for the wastewater treatment plant. My intent at this point in time is to maintain a level of reserves in that we're comfortable with and we're not fully depleting them. So I'm hopeful around around 50% would be my recommendation, that we would use approximately 50% of them now and leave 50% of them for future unknown needs. And again, with the working reserve, we would come up with a balance. I think the financing strategy drafted right now sits at around a million dollars, just to keep that balance there. But again, those are conversations that we can have as, as staff present options to counsel for the financing strategy and where your level of comfort is to kind of bring those balances down to support the project going forward.
Great, thanks. Moving on.
So here you have the overall summary. New this year or different from last year, we've separated operating and capital. We figure, we feel that this gives a better snapshot of our true expenses and a clearer picture for everyone outside of the department looking at it. The, in total, the proposed 2025 utilities budget decreased by $4.7 million, as did our projected revenue. It also decreased by $2.4 million, which is directly related to the wastewater treatment plant project, which again, I've said it a million times now, but it's going to be presented in a separate budget. So this is showing our approved 2024 budget, our projected year end, and again, our proposed 2025 budget. And as mentioned previously as well, this budget allows for approximately $1.7 million to be transferred from our capital maintenance reserve, or sorry, to our capital maintenance reserve to help fund these future capital, capital in-ground projects or those that may come up in the future.
Yeah, so if it's helpful to counsel, we can kind of go through the process kind of line by line, which helps explain the transfers in and out of reserves. So what we're looking at on the operating side.
Sorry, Ellen, just before you go, I think Councilor Pennell had a question before we get too far away from that, so.
Thank you, worship. I appreciate this. Christie, sorry, could you explain to me how, how did the 2025 proposed budget be decreased by 4.7 million?
Yes, it's specific to the wastewater treatment plant. So in the 2024 budget, we had included capital contributions for the plant, which would be, I think, capital expenditures line for the approved budget was 6.6 million. And in 2025, obviously, our capital is much lower at 1.6 million.
Fantastic, thank you.
Sorry, Ellen, go ahead.
Okay, so as Christie mentioned, we separated operating to capital. And as you'll see in the top half of this chart, our operating budget this year is looking to operate at a surplus of approximately $430,000 that will be transferred into reserves. And then when we look at the capital side, we pulled out the revenue specific to capital. So that's the capital surcharge that's applied to bills and the budget for that is $2.9 million. Sorry, that must have been, so that's 2.7, so there will be additional revenues in there. Would, is the carryforward from prior year capital budget? Capital expenses we're showing at 1.63 million. That includes the 1.3 for the wastewater treatment plant and the other capital items that were discussed previously in the presentation. As you'll see, we are transferring the full amount of the capital surcharge, the 2.7 into reserves. With that being said, we still would be required to transfer back out of reserves to fund the portion of capital that's not covered through the remainder of the budget of $1.5 million. So if you take the 1.5 million plus the 4 million, or sorry, the $400,000 transferred from operating, that's the remaining surplus that will go into the reserves. Thank you for your patience there. Councilor Pennell, can you point me to the slide that you had asked to come back to? I think there was two numbers you were looking to confirm, and that's what I'm just trying to do there for you. We were coming back to slide 28, the last one we're looking at right now, but the previous one.
I believe it was slide eight when we were talking about the 1.2.
Okay, so just to summarize here, so the capital surcharge is going into reserves, which is 2.7. The operating surplus is going into reserve, which is 400,000. Capital surcharge that we're using in this budget year is 1.5 million, leaving a net addition to reserves of 1.6 as outlined in this, in this spreadsheet.
Great, thanks Ellen. Is there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. Ellen, I'm just wondering where that 1.2 shows up, that's all.
I will reconfirm those numbers, counselor, but I believe what has happened there is that we were looking at the 1.6 million contribution to reserves on capital and adding the $400,000 in on operating, which is what brought us to the, the one point, sorry, 2.1, what was it? 1.2.
Did you want to take a break, Ellen? Or we've got, we've got all days, it doesn't matter. Yep, absolutely. Go ahead, Councilor Schenk.
We got contracted services. What do we contract services for, for $715,000?
So historically, in previous budgets, we were asked to identify or pull out contracted services and materials and supplies separately. Things for the utility in general that we would use or categorize under contracted services would be calibrations of our equipment, some of our service contracts for our alarm monitoring. Sorry, I apologize, I'm just going through the list as I speak here, but all of our lab and sampling fees go into that. Our insurance, our sludge removal, so there's a significant, very significantly based on the plant, but that's a general idea of types of things that go into the contracted services.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Who looks after our lab? What's the one, because it starts with a C, right in North Kingston? Do they do all our lab stuff for water?
Currently, the majority of our routine sampling goes through Caducion Labs. We have some special sampling, I guess I would call it, that go to other labs elsewhere that can't be completed by Caducion. But for the most part, our weekly samples or routine samples do go through there at a Kingston.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I'm just trying to, well, I see until Ellen lifts her fingers, then I will continue. So may I ask you with, is with our new plant and everything else and with the new, do we have any staff that can do any of that, our own lab work?
So through you, worship, we do a great detail of internal labs. A minimum of three days a week, depending on the facility. So water treatment, we're looking at pH and temperature, verifying chlorine. We're looking at hardness and alkalinity and that sort of thing. For our wastewater treatment plant, we're doing a number of labs also internally to determine sludge loading and our mixed liquor suspended solids and our volatile solids and to help with process adjustments. So yes, there are a number of things we're looking at daily, if not, some things daily, some things a few days a week in-house that helps guide our operations. But a lot of our regulated stuff, so our bacteriological testing, that has to be outsourced to a lab, an accredited lab to, to confirm that everything's okay.
Great, thanks, Councilor Schenk.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you all for your patience as I looked into that. So I believe that the information on slide eight is incorrect there, and I am confident in the numbers that the amount going into reserves is 1.6 as outlined on the final slide.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks Ellen. Is there any other questions or comments? I'm thinking it is Mike, but we can get a confirmation here.
Is that cash in the bank or is that just a credit note?
It is, sorry Nathan, it is cash collected. It's not necessarily always cash in our bank because our bank account is shared with town and there's lots of things coming and going, including receivables that we hold. So do we physically have a bank account with that money sitting in it? No, but we have raised the cash to support that reserve.
It's just, the only reason why I ask is because a lot of times the old credit notes and you have this in the bank and nah, you don't really have the, but it's credited towards that account, you know what I mean? I'm just from the old school. I still like what you have in the reserve and it's cash in the bank and this is what it is, you know, rather than, but it's a different age.
Yes, it is. There's no doubt about that. So, Councilor Hicks.
So something that Ellen, oh, through you, your worship, something that you just said Ellen caught my ear. The bank account singular is shared with the town and utilities? Or is, like, is it just one big pot? Or you'll have to forgive me for asking that question, but I would have thought that utilities would have their own separate set of books, bank account, yeah.
Yeah, so through your worship to Councilor Hicks, there is one singular bank account, physical bank account. They absolutely have separate bank accounts. They have separate bank account GLs, if you will, that track that separately. But physically, there is one, one account. But the books are, are separate and they're tracked very separately.
Great, thanks. Is there anything else? Yep, go ahead, Councilor Schenk.
For the labor of this, but Ellen and Matthew, if there's a large sum of money that sits in account, I know between tax times, between especially, you know, you have your OP billing and everything else in the year I run today, but do we ever put that in a higher interest? You know what I mean? Not that it's just simply sitting there and not creating any more money for us. Like, do we, all I'm saying is in the future, I don't need it to answer now, is that if you've got a million dollars sitting in the bank, you know what I mean? And it's, it's in one account, but I mean, it is actual cash, rather than just leaving it at that and basically making nothing. Can we put that in something else that we can still, you know what I mean? Take out when needed, but still have a higher rate? I'm just trying to, I'm, I know I'm nickel and diamond again, but all I'm saying is, is just try to look at any other possible way to increase revenue that you might currently don't have. That's all I'm saying is, I don't need an answer now or anything else, but just.
Thank you for the question. We do do that. We have investments outside of our general bank account. One in particular, for example, was the sale of the PUC, where we have that in a separate investment account and we use the interest earned on that separately. We do have other investments and it's something that we will be reviewing in the future. But yes, we do.
Great, thanks, Councilor Schenk. Is there anything else? No, sorry. Where do you want to go now, ladies?
Just one further point of clarification on slide eight. Although I do think that the number is still slightly off. What we're looking at on slide eight in the light blue is what we're pulling from reserves rather than what's putting into it. So that was part of my confusion when I was looking at the two numbers there. I apologize for that.
So to clarify on slide eight, that light blue number was, for example, in 2024, it's what we pulled from reserves and what came in from grant funding combined. So this, as it may have adjusted slightly, this 1.2 might be closer to 1.5, but what we're pulling back out of reserves to, to fund the remainder of the budget. I think moving forward, we, we need to identify these maybe as three different colors. One specific to what we pull from reserves, one specific to grant funding, and then one, the total budget less the reserve or funding contribution.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, worship. The, the, I think what I just heard you say, Christie, was that the 1.2 on page eight, 1.2 is being pulled from reserves to fund our budget. However, at the very last line, we have, we're putting back in the reserves 1.6. So why are we pulling out 1.2 to put 1.6 back in?
So Ellen can speak to this more if needed, but so what happens is our capital revenue in the line under utilities capital for the proposed budget, 2.9, that includes revenue from our capital maintenance surcharges. And what we need to do is we need to pull that in, put it into reserves, and then some of that is going to fund the budget, which is 1.499, 1.5. And then the remainder, 1.6 or 1.7 is what's going to go into the reserves and stay in there. Does that make sense, Ellen?
That's correct, Christie. So what, what was happening before, which I think was less representative of what truly was happening, is that the, the 2.7 in the capital surcharge was being recorded as revenue and then the capital budget just used it, but without showing the transfer. then the capital budget just used it, but without showing the transfer that it was revenue coming in that was being set aside for capital use and then we were immediately using it. So this has added an extra couple steps, but I think for tracking purposes and for truly understanding where the capital surcharge is being, where and when the capital surcharge is being used, this breaks that down a little bit more granular. So you see it going in, but then immediately we're going to pull it out to fund our capital needs for that year and we're only pulling a portion of it. So that's what's showing that we'll have the 1.6 remaining out of the 2.7 in capital surcharge for 2025. A little bit clearer.
Yep, makes sense to me. Makes it very trackable, so thank you. Is there anything further, Counselor Pennell? Good, is there anything further, Counsel, with respect to the presentation we've heard? Seeing none, I think we are at the end, are we not?
We are at the end of the formal presentation, but of course, still happy to answer any questions that may be lingering for Counsel.
Okay, Counselors, generally speaking, is there anything that we want to ask before we let these ladies go to lunch? Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, Your Worship. Not necessarily ask, but acknowledge the amount of detail that you've provided to us and the breakdown. This has been much easier to understand, I think, this, for me anyway, this year. So I personally would just like to say thank you. Good job.
Well said, Counselor Hicks. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yeah, through you, Your Worship. Got to echo Counselor Hicks. This is, was very simple to understand, very straightforward, easygoing, and I appreciate all the work that everybody's done to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Calver, and I will echo those sentiments. Anything that makes our lives easier, we greatly will accept and respect. So if there's nothing further, we'll look for a motion to receive for information proposed 2025 Greater Nappany Utilities Operating Capital Budgets as presented and further subject to any direction given at this meeting. Counsel direct at a bylaw to adopt the 2025 Greater Nappany Utilities Operating on Capital Budgets and Water and Sewer Service Charges at the rate presented come forward at the December 10, 2024 meeting for final approval, following the prior required notice being completed. By Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
I know you guys answered my question, but are we going to look at any other source of revenue generating user system besides what there's currently presented? Like, we're not going to do the $2, we're going to leave that at $2 down there, all right? And we're raising the $2 to 2.65 for large thing, but you're going to be going ahead and doing a cost analysis of what it costs and what it doesn't cost us, you know what I mean? And where we could generate more of a user system. And also, you're looking at the sewage. I just, it has me greatly concerned when you have 14 trucks going into a sewage plant right now. We don't have the new one yet, you know what I mean? And with the Motobio, was it BOD? I think you said bio, bio oxygen, whatever, it's the heavy poop. So the point is, is that, that we're looking at a way to mitigate that. So if you come up with anything, even though the budget gets approved, the budget, everything else, please come back to us before, you know, the poop hits the fan, might say, you know what I mean? So I just, you know, I just want to mitigate that. Can only handle one a day in the summertime, we have 14, we have people driving two hours away and Prince Edward County is $70 to $80 a cubic meter, you know what I mean, or whatever it is, then you know what? I'm number one to look after our own first, that's number one. And then people that might want to abuse our system or, you know, because we're cheaper, we have to increase that. So that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I think.
$3 doesn't cut it, you want to raise it to 31 or 40 or whatever, then feel, please come back to us and say, hey, guys, we got a serious problem here.
Yeah, I think Mr. Grant wants to weigh in, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, in addition to the comprehensive review of utilities rates and fees and charges across the board, if we identify something similar to what we have with Septa College, there's nothing precluding us from coming in year and bringing that to your attention. And if something obvious jumps out to us prior to a review being completed, we would certainly bring that to Counsel's attention for your consideration.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Through your worship, I will just also add from a timing perspective, if the goal is to approve the utilities budget and the rates prior to the end of this fiscal year so that they're effective for January 1, we do need to start our public notice process next week to be compliant with our timelines. We have adopted the budget in January before, so if there are areas of concern, that certainly, we're not committed to it needing to be adopted on December 10. That's just the easiest from a communications perspective. But specifically for those one-off fees such as the bulk water fill, the Septa College rates, we can always do a mid-year amendment to that bylaw. That's always something that's within Counsel's authority and ability to do, and it doesn't impact our billing too significantly to do that.
A great thank you, Madam Clerk, and I know that probably puts a lot of our minds at ease, so thank you for that. Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Christie, Ellen, I appreciate all the work that you've put in to this budget and as my peers have stated, it was fairly, fairly easy to follow and to read through. However, on the heels, well, not on heels, but with the upcoming other budget restraints that we're going to be having and with our start of over 6%, I don't think I'd be doing the residents any justice of just approving this or going right through without even a challenge. I mean, $80,000 for new vehicles, is there any way that we can squeeze that out for another year? 5% increase on user fees, probably don't, doesn't affect everybody here, but it does affect 3,600 some odd residents in the town that are going to be putting an increase on top of our, of our regular tax increase coming through. So although I really respect everything you've done, I would think that we would have challenged this somewhat or asked to go back and sharpen some pencils, but it doesn't look like that's going to happen, so I'm just going to say, sorry, I can't, can't support it at this time without asking for something, something for the residents, so, once again, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Pennell. We do have a motion on the floor. If there's nothing else, then we'll call for the vote. Yep, go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Could we have a recorded vote, please?
Yep, absolutely. If there's nothing further, sorry, go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
So I'll explain my reasoning to staff, all right? 2013 was, I think it was $170 was average bill bi-monthly. 11 years later, you're at 200, I think it was 202, I think, was it something like that? I'm not 100% sure again. It was $10 this year. So if I, 2.25, so you're 55, you know, 55 bucks in 11 years, you know what I mean? Considering the upgrades that you have to do for your infrastructure, that's the number one thing, trying to stay ahead of the curve. And we have a user, if you use, if you rent an hour ICE, you have a Zamboni fee of five bucks for every hour, believe it or not, is that correct there?
Yeah, that's my understanding. I think it's in around that $5 range, Counselor Schenk.
All right, so for every hour, you got to replace that Zamboni. So that's for every hour. And what we're saying right now is $5 on a month, all right? And that encompasses putting money, money into the reserves, trying to keep up with the expenditures that we are going to definitely have and the infrastructure that we have to put into the ground, all right, to upgrade, plus all those other lists of upgrades through the county and all the other roads that we need. So that's the reason why I feel confident in what you've brought together and with what Ellen and Nathan and your staff have done, you've made it very, pretty well, there's no errors. I found no errors that I can see of, and it's made it clear to myself, all right, of what we need and what we don't need and how we need it. So I appreciate that, but that was my line, why I feel that we should go with what we have, all right? If there was any discussions elsewhere, then I would say, hey, then I would agree with what Counselor Pennell said, but I'm confident that way.
Thank you, Counselor Schenk, and I agree with you. Nobody wants to see user rates increase. We, you know, none of us do, and none of us, I'm sure that the 17,000 residents that we have want to see this. However, the increase that we're looking at, I believe, is very modest. It's very doable, and thank you for bringing in the attention to the Zamboni, because I think whoever come up with that process many, many years ago was, was very forward-thinking in the fact that $5 per hour ICE time, we don't notice it when we're renting the ICE time, but we really do notice it 10 years later when we got to buy a new Zamboni because we got a healthy little reserve there to help cut those costs. And I compare this budget to that in the fact that there's forward-thinking with this budget. Yes, there's an increase of $5 a month to our utilities, to our water and wastewater, $10 per bill bi-weekly, but what we're, or bi-monthly, sorry, but what we're doing is we're investing in the future with this. We understand that there's going to be some extensive costs with respect to the new wastewater treatment plant, and we're looking at that. We understand that we have infrastructure that has to be fixed and we're investing and we're looking at that. So again, none of us wanted to increase these user fees, but my goodness, I think what's being proposed here today is absolutely manageable. It's far more manageable than maybe some of the more things that we're going to see in the next budgets coming forward. So I'm going to agree with you, Counselor Schenk, that I'm content with what we've heard here today, and I can only hope that our next budget meetings are going to be as profitable or as easy to get through. I'm not convinced of that, but I can hope for that anyways, so thank you. Is there anything that came out of what I had to say before we call for the vote? Yep, go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
This, Matthew and his staff, this was the easy one. The tough one is going to be the starting point at 6%. So your MPP, shake every tree that we can possibly shake to get a bill at 23%. I know Collingwood is 37%. Some of the motions that they're passing, we have to somehow make it at least a bit palatable, but at 6% is just right off the bat to get arbitrarily go, here's 23%. And when we have the provincial jail and what that, you know, the costs associated with that, it's unfair on our side. We have a lot of arguments to it. I just, all I'm saying is, is I know the next meetings are going to be the tough ones is that we shake every tree, rattle everything that we could possibly do and fight the battles that we can possibly fight, but that is one battle I think that we definitely have to argue, so that's it. I know it's not related to PUC, but I think it would make Ellen and Nathan a lot happier if we knew we didn't have to start at 6, and me and everybody else.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk, and I know that there has been discussions and I know that Mr. Grant and his staff is well aware of our concerns, so, but thank you for bringing it up. So is there anything else? If there isn't, we'll hand the reins over to Madam Clerk for the recorded vote.
Word one, Counselor Schenk. Word two.
Yes.
Word two, Counselor Hicks.
Yes.
Word three, Counselor Pennell.
No.
Word five, Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Calver.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we'll look for a motion to confirm the proceedings or a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of Towne and Greater Nappany at the special session the Council held November 6, 2024. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin, ready first, second, and finally passed the sixth day of November 2024. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried, and motion for adjournment. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schenk. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, folks. It's been a productive morning and we'll see you next week.